Good evening. Welcome to this meeting of the Merrimack School Board this Monday evening, December 15th, 2014. Would you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two on tonight's agenda is the approval of the December 1st, 2014 minutes. It's their motion made by Mr. Powell, seconded by Ms. Gualyumi. Any amendments? Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
Thank you. On page two, line 59, where we were talking about the award recognition for students against destructive decisions, I was wondering if we could go back to the tape and capture the names of the student officers that were here and have that put into the record. And on page three, line 105, if we could insert the word "always" after, well, I'll read it rotating terms, so there is always one person up for election at the annual town meeting. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other amendments? Okay, I have some. On page two, line 80, if we could change the word "many" to "any male students involved in SAD," and then if we could just add a comma and say, "as all of the students in attendance happen to be female." And then on page three, line 152, if we can just change Mr. Watkins' name to have an "s" at the end. And on line 154, if we could add to the sentence that reads, "because they generate income," if we could say through harvesting. That would be more clear. And then I think I had some others. No, I did not. Those are my amendments. So with that, we will put the minutes to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the December 1st, 2014 minutes as amended signify by saying aye. Opposed? None? That motion carries 5-0-0. That takes us to item number three, public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board. All we ask is that you come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Is there anyone looking to address the board under public participation? Seeing none, we'll close public participation and we'll move to item four, recognition of Southern New Hampshire University master's degree graduates who are district educators. I will turn this over to Assistant Superintendent Dr. Mark McLaughlin.
Thank you very much. I'm going to invite those who are going to speak tonight to move up to the microphones. And while they do that, I'm going to make some introductions in just a moment. But I'd like to start by sharing just a little context with you all. A little over three years ago, Mary Heath, then the Dean of the School of Education at Southern New Hampshire University, approached our superintendent with an idea to build a genuine, multifaceted K-12 higher ed partnership that could benefit both the Merrimack School District and Southern New Hampshire, that would help to grow our profession in a number of ways. From that initial conversation, we appear before you tonight with the initial results of that idea, the conclusion of our first Merrimack School District Southern New Hampshire University graduate cohort. And we are delighted to have so many members of that cohort here tonight. Some are going to speak with you, and those who are here and not speaking could speak in the interest of time. We elected to have a few representatives, but I just want to say that they're all full partners and wonderful participants and wonderful ambassadors of the Merrimack School District. And, you know, one of the things that we tried to do in our district is to provide good professional development for our educators, because we all know that the professional development that goes to support educators has a tremendous effect and impact on our students. And so, these are great examples of people who are working to better themselves in their profession and by direct correlation to our students as well. So having said that, I'm just going to call out a few people tonight. We are delighted and very proud to have now State Representative Mary Heath with us tonight. Mary, I just wonder if you could stand and just let us just... We also have Assistant Professor Audrey Rogers, who is now the Southern New Hampshire University point person for this work going forward. At the table tonight is Jill Solano, a social studies teacher at Merrimack Middle School, Deb Belanger, a math teacher at Merrimack High School, Ann Graves, teacher at Thornton's Ferry School, Adam French, teacher at Merrimack High School, and Crystal Lynn Shea, a teacher at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. So I'm going to turn it to Deb to just begin her remarks.
Okay. Sorry, this is more professional than I'm used to. I just want to apologize, I don't have much of a voice, I've been sick, so if you can't hear me, please let me know. I compiled some data in talking with my colleagues about credit and students, and figured out, on average, we took about 30 credits each from SNU, which resulted in about 840 graduate credits in two and a half years with the entire cohort. Some people had taken Intel Math before, and others had other electives, so it rounded out to about 30 each. And I also compiled the number of students impacted between the high school and middle school, we were at every school, and we figured out with some overlap, we're probably just this year alone hitting about 1,200 students in total impact in one year, and we've been doing this for two and a half years. So over the course of the next few years, it's likely that we could impact every student in the district in some way, which is a really good feeling, because, excuse me, we have the newest tools, the latest initiatives, the most relevant knowledge in our graduate degrees. You know, some teachers get graduate degrees right when they get out of school, and then they move into teaching. I think we had a little different perspective coming into class, already having that teaching experience and applying it, and then going back and applying it in our classrooms. I know for me that it's made me a better teacher, being a student has made me a better teacher, what it's like to get assignments and read them, and, you know, we have all these hands go up saying, "Wait, I don't know exactly what it is that you're looking for," and it's helped me, just that simple thing, to write better assignments for my students. And I think that any good teacher will analyze their own instruction, but now we analyze it from a student perspective as well, which gives us a different viewpoint. So I don't want to step on anyone else's toes, I'll finish up at the end if I want to add anything, but Jill's going to go next.
All right, so I was given the charge of speaking to the collegiality that we all developed as a cohort. I think we had the most unique opportunity to work together as a cohort of the same district teachers, and our professors were thrilled to have classes with us, because we had such a different insight than they were used to. Not only, I think, our level of experience, a lot of us are veteran teachers, really, but we all work in the same district and have the same kind of goals and the same backgrounds that we brought to the table, and it was really interesting to hear what everybody had to say and also give that perspective to the professors. So it was really nice to actually have a learning community to draw from and then provide that back to our students and reflect back on that. So basically, this has positively impacted our teaching in many ways. As Deb mentioned, we have state-of-the-art tools now. We were on the verge of all the, kind of, the best things out there. It was really interesting to apply, coming from the middle school, our skills work to the classes we had. Lindsay Otaka, the other middle school teacher that was in the cohort with us, we had a lot of insight to give based on the work we've been doing at the middle school, and it was really nice to understand, oh, these are all the templates we've been using, and give that insight also to our colleagues. So it tied directly into what we've actually been working on, which was really neat to see. We have worked extensively with assessments and tracking student data and interventions, so that's been some of our focus on our classes. So a lot of the district logic models that we've pulled in to our classes and have then applied back into our own teaching styles. We've become acquainted with an array of technologies, so some of us are a little more tech savvy than others, but we learned a lot, and we've applied that back into our classrooms as well. So starting to incorporate more technology that we learned in our classes. But I think the unforeseen benefits are probably some that we're most proud of, I know Ann's going to speak a little bit more about that as well. We, as a cohort, built a network, and we soon realized that we had a kind of a faint idea of what we were all doing in all the separate schools, but now coming together as one cohort, I think we were, what, 29 towards the end, we really saw what the other hand was doing in each of the levels. So we saw the reading inventories and all the work, the hard work the elementary levels are doing, and then being at the middle school, I saw that tie between the elementary and then where they're going to the competencies in the high school, and we had, they had the opportunity to, you know, have a lot of discussion on that and build with each other, well, what do you want us to do in the middle school, okay, or what do you want us to do in the elementary school, and actually have that chance to collaborate with each other was really neat. And we had the opportunity to do that, and I think otherwise we wouldn't have really gotten that chance. And we, just recently, were at SARESC, some of us, for our training, and it was really neat to see familiar faces and actually build that connection back with each other and talk about, you know, how are we using some things in class and actually kind of touch base again. But it's given us a tremendous amount of insight at what curriculum is being covered, so we can have those discussions and make sure, you know, we're in line with each other and what we need to be doing. And basically, to understand where our students are coming from and where their educational journey is going to end up in the high school, I think that was something that we didn't expect to happen. I think this was meant to be, you know, an opportunity to get graduate credits and work together as a Merrimack group of teachers, but we became so much more than that. And it really was interesting to have that feeling of collegiality and collaboration and just the whole way through, and the professors reflected back on that and how amazing that was to see how close we had grown in two and a half years. And it was, as hard as it was, it was so enriching and such a benefit to all of us, and I think our students are definitely going to reap the benefits of that. And I think that if there was a chance to do this again, it would be a fantastic opportunity, because it's, I don't know, I've always wanted to get my masters and been teaching for 11 years now, and I was like, oh, this is the opportunity to do it, and you have the support system of the whole school and your colleagues that are in the cohort, it was really, really good.
Good evening, thank you. I'm Crystal Lynn Shea, and I'm so pleased to be able to speak on behalf of my peers as a lifelong member of the community in Merrimack. My three siblings and I went to school K through 12 in Merrimack, and I'm now a resident, raising my family here. So I have a great deal of pride in the town of Merrimack and in our school system, and that was only, you know, further deepens when we were approached by Dr. McLaughlin about three years ago, giving us this wonderful opportunity to earn our masters as a cohort. And I think that strong communities are based on certain factors, and educational systems is certainly one of those huge factors, and certainly having highly trained teachers is an important part of a strong school system. So, you know, our increased breadth of knowledge now that we have graduated touches upon so many things. We had classes in ethics and law, educational assessment, and as Jill spoke to technology integration, and certainly we have a lot of technological tools in the district, and we're now better equipped to use those and to have our students be using those. So that's, those are just a few of the topics that we learned about, but that had a really immediate effect on our students. We were able to go into class the next day and try something out that maybe we wouldn't have had the confidence to do without, you know, this program. So beyond that, you know, our pedagogy really evolved. We talked about differentiation of product, process, and content. We have such a deeper understanding of learning styles, we're so much more mindful of our place in this really complex system. Our ability to refine practice has been, you know, increased, we now look at things through the lens of a researcher. So we just have learned so much, and it wasn't always easy, and time was, of course, always a premium. And some of us went through some really big changes over the course of this program. Wedding bells and babies, and there were even a few instances where these, you know, sleepy little newborn mascots were passed around tables with textbooks, mine included, or the professor was standing at the front of the class, you know, lecturing, holding one of our little sleeping beauties. So, you know, we'd talk about how, what a camaraderie we have, and it certainly, certainly was evident. So we wouldn't have been able to do that, however, and I mention those things because the specialized course schedule and a very reduced monetary burden made it possible for us to be able to mount these huge life changes and handle professional and personal lives. And those two things really could have made it, you know, just a task too great to achieve had we not had those things. So, you know, in closing, I just think that the ripple effect is, it's broader than the scope of our classrooms even. We were examples to everybody that we know, including our students, of what it means to be a lifelong learner, that learning doesn't stop at the end of a unit test or when you graduate. You know, Mrs. Shea is a student too, Mrs. Shea is learning and doing homework, and the kids are like, "Really?" It's really eye-opening for them. So, you know, our families, our students, our colleagues, our administration, you, the school board, have really helped to strengthen the fabric of the community through the support of this cohort program. And I know that when other Merrimack teachers are offered this opportunity, we're just going to continue to reap the benefits of all the wonderful, far-reaching trends that you'll hear spoken about tonight, so thank you.
Good evening, thank you very much. I'm going to speak to the financial benefit, the cost benefit, and personal benefit. First of all, earning a master's degree had always been a dream of mine, but not one that I could ever realize financially as a single parent raising three children. But the collaboration between the Merrimack School District and the Southern New Hampshire University was the only way that I was ever going to attain this dream. I also believe that if I had pursued a master's degree earlier in my career, it would not have been as current and relevant as it is today. The skills that I learned from my coursework as a 21st century learner are both current and relevant and will take me to the end of my teaching career, I hope. My degree combined with my many years of teaching experience is a perfect marriage that will allow me to provide the best education to my students and afford me the opportunity to be a leader among my colleagues. The financial benefits and savings of this program were substantial. A master's degree in education at Southern New Hampshire University at full price tuition is about $20,000. The Merrimack cohort program with courses ranging from $375 with our district instructors to $675 per course with our SNU instructors is a cost of approximately $6,000, so that is a substantial savings. As Deb had alluded to, the program consisted of 11 courses, and many of us only needed to take nine, as we were able to transfer in up to six credits, which was a nice benefit. Some of us, myself included, were able to use our six Intel Math credits that we earned through Plymouth State University, which was funded by Intel at a cost of $25 for six credits, which was also a substantial saving. Those who did not have transferable credits took additional courses in reading, technology, or school administration. Most of our courses were reimbursed by the district staff development funding. I'm happy to say that I do not have any outstanding student loan debt, and I think that I speak for all my fellow colleagues when I say that the cost was very manageable, even for those of us facing life events such as single parenthood, marriages, new additions to families, impending births, grade level changes, illnesses, injuries, and yes, even an earthquake. Another financial benefit was being able to move up on the Merrimack School District salary scale. We were able to move up not only at the beginning of a school year, but also at the halfway mark. I'm proud to say that we will all be moving up one more time in February to the master's level. The biggest personal benefit, besides the elated feeling of accomplishment and receiving the diploma in the mail to make it official, has to be the bond and friendships that we forged as a cohort. We worked as groups large and small and in partnerships. We were there to support one another, share ideas and materials, and to provide each other with an encouraging text message of, "You can do it," when you had just minutes to post on blackboard at 11:55 PM on Sunday evenings. When some of us were ready to give up, our teammates pulled us through. We are looking forward to an upcoming celebration in January, our hooding ceremony and walk-in cap-and-gowns in May. My fellow colleagues, and I thank you again for putting together such a fine program and giving us this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to further our education, so that we may continue to be an integral part of the outstanding education that is the Merrimack School District. Thank you. Adam?
Hello, I'm Adam French. I, for 15 years, taught in a school that was, well, I'm sorry, 10 out of my 15 years, taught in a school that was K through 12. So I got used to having all these relationships with teachers from kindergarten up to 12th grade. We worked with the second graders, and sometimes I said, like, 10th graders are just second graders all starting over at maturity level. Sometimes, you know, it's like a new beginning, because sometimes you get on the second grade and they're acting almost the exact same. The kids liked it. So then I came to Merrimack, and it's this big district, and you don't see anybody. I mean, I didn't even know if Thornton's Ferry, Reed's Ferry, I didn't know where the schools were, and I couldn't keep them straight, and then the ice cream places were associated with each of them, I didn't know. So I jumped into Merrimack, and next thing I know, you know, I started coaching basketball and took on class advisor and was a club advisor, and then they talked me into doing track, and then next thing I know, I was going to China with Chris Ortega and chaperoning over there. And so I was actually getting ready for a China trip, and I happened to walk by and heard Mark talking about this cohort, and I said, "Well, might as well add one more thing to the fire and start with that next year," because I always wanted to get my masters, but like everybody said, it's just, sometimes you just get in the flow, and if I really wanted to be coaching and doing all this other stuff, where are you going to find the time? And Jill brought up the relationships that we formed, not only with our cohorts throughout the members, but even meeting other people then from the town and SNHU and all our teachers. We had Marcia, Kim, Debbie, Nikki, Bill, Helen, Sarah, and Garth that all taught, getting to know Mark a lot better. So we had all these relationships, and then there were these Common Core and UBD that I, all these things, the acronyms are getting thrown around, and here's this program where not only do we learn about UBD, we actually design our lesson plans, and we implement them in our classes, and we're working with, like, I worked with Lisa Chaloner, who's a biology teacher, and so we were actually able to really collaborate well. But then we also saw what was going on in the math class and in the English class and history class, so that was a good tie-in, as well as seeing what was going on in younger grades, because when it came to the Common Core and implementing reading, we look at these younger grades, and I thought, you know, when I heard all about this, I really got overwhelmed in some of these reading classes. I didn't know what in the world all these acronyms were and what these books were and these, and they're thrown around like nothing, and I kind of felt out of place. I'm like, okay. Luckily, I had a really good instructors, Crystal Lynn sat with me, and we, with our technology class, we actually sat on FaceTime while working on Google Docs and typing together, and I was in New York, and I think you were in your kitchen, and it was really wonderful, because Audrey taught us that. And we just had this nice little ability to work and add this new technology, and we were actually using it. And so these are things that really fit well. And of course, Ann brought up the earthquake, our first class, Deb Wolfline and Kim Yarlot were teaching, and we were, we heard this rumbling, and we thought the vacuums were going, and the next thing you know, the whole classroom's shaking. So it was a good way to, it was just kind of a unifying part of our class that we kind of all, us, it makes sense to, not everybody else, you know, we have this little tie-in. But I would like to just thank the school board and the administration and SNHU for this opportunity, the taxpayers, thank you, because I think in the long run, it's really benefited me and my classroom. I'm still using the things that we've done, I've been adding new ideas, some of us have got together and taught some of the other people in our cohorts, and, you know, we've actually implemented this into starting to work on remediation for our competencies, using the Play-Doh system, I started using that this year, and us in the science department have been using some of this. It's really kind of tying it all together. It's something that, like Ann said, we wouldn't have been able to use this effectively if I was a grad student. Some of the professors have said they weren't expecting some of the things that we've put out, because they're used to having people that have never been in a classroom. And I think being able to do this while we're in a classroom and being able to do all the fun things that we love to do, and not having to stop coaching and having to stop having your families and getting married, we've actually been able to do all kinds of things and keep learning. So, thank you. Audrey Rogers from SNHU is going to speak next.
Hi, everyone. It is my honor to speak on behalf of SNHU in regards to this partnership. I want to thank the school board and the administration for your support. I want to thank the district teachers who taught in the program, and this group of teachers here tonight and those who can't be here. In preparation for tonight, I brainstormed words that came to mind when I thought of this cohort, and the words impressive, hardworking, collegial, leaders, up for the challenge, collaborative, and brave came to mind. I am so proud of this group in many different ways. First and foremost, as a community member, I've been in Merrimack for 25 years. I know how wonderful these, many of these teachers are, as my son Ben graduated in 2012, and my daughter Merrill is currently a junior. So I knew many of them and how wonderful some of the elementary, middle, and high school teachers are, but really, I have met now such a range of teachers. And as their instructor, I had the privilege of having them early on in the program and then for their final practicum. So the growth that I saw in these teachers was amazing. And another way that I am proud of them was the application of their coursework to their classes, they directly impacted their students. For example, in the practicum, they created units that they then implemented with their students, they created training programs in technology, training programs in RTI, where different teachers came together to forward district initiatives. It was really wonderful to see, and congratulations to Merrimack. You have a group of scholarly thinkers who tap into research, and I want to thank Mary Heath for starting this a few years ago.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for including me. Hearing the voices of teachers is just absolutely incredible, and for Southern New Hampshire University, it's such a win for them, because it takes the learning to where the teaching is happening and vice versa. So it was so wonderful for our school of education and for our students. But I want to especially thank Paula Blank for believing in reaching out to our communities and allowing us to really put together programs in a cost-effective way that really goes out to where the teachers are. It was a wonderful opportunity for SNU's teachers as well as SNU's students who get into the classrooms, but to hear the voices of your teachers tonight and to know that they're connecting their learning with that of their students is so absolutely incredible. Just kudos to you all, and thank you, and again, thank Dr. Paula Blank, because he's an amazing man, to give us the incentive to really go forward and do these kinds of things in our local communities. So I thank you.
And I'll finish by saying that my current dean, Ray McNulty, who couldn't be here tonight, very proud of this group, very much interested in continuing the work of Mary Heath.
Okay, and I will finish off, I know we would be remiss if we didn't thank you, Audrey. I know a lot of people were happy to hear that you were going to be part of our practicum and that you were a go-to person for us as we wrapped up the cohort. Any questions we had, you were always there with an answer, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Deb, thank you, everyone.
And Mr. McLaughlin as well, thank you for putting this program together and offering it out to us. As we said, most of us would not have been able to achieve what we achieved, not in the time we achieved, not financially in the way we achieved it, so we really do appreciate it, thank you. Is there any questions from the board for any of us?
Thank you. Before I open it up to the board, I just want to know, I know not everyone is here, but how many graduates are there of the program? 28. And if you are here in a graduate, could you please stand? On behalf of the board, I congratulate you on the hard work that you put in. You talked about- Uh, you, you talked about how the, the process and the partnership made it easier and more affordable, um, but we certainly recognize and appreciate all of the work that you put in to advance your degrees and, and the work that, that you're bringing back to the classroom. Uh, in addition to the students benefiting, I think there's that tie with each other and, and across buildings and, and disciplines that, that we also benefit from. Are there any questions from the board? Vice Chair Barnes?
Um, I'm going to follow on something Mr. French said about, um, having all the abbreviations and the, and the acronyms. So, I'm going to make you say, "What's UBD?" right now, quick. Understanding by design. Understanding by design, very good.
I guess he can get the paper now.
Okay. There you go. Very quick. But, uh, the reason we say that is because at the board level, obviously, we are lay people who are elected. We ask all the time what these acronyms mean. So, we did know what UBD meant most, so, uh, but, uh, because Mark also drills it into us. But, uh, we do, it's, it's tough. It's tough to navigate an educational world when it does have its own language, you're right. So, uh, congratulations on, on, uh, earning your degrees. Um, I know that there were some in the beginning that may not have made it quite to the end. I know sometimes life happens that it happens so profoundly that you just can't necessarily keep on track. Are there, uh, methods in place where if people did start and didn't get to finish, that they'd have opportunity to wrap up if courses missed, or are they very specific to Merrimack, the, uh, the curriculum of study, where it would be hard to kind of make up a class?
Yeah, they, they left very early. In a cohort model, you know, all of the courses that were, um, embedded with district-centric initiatives and goals, so it really would have to be reconstituted with a new cohort for, for anyone to join.
Gotcha. Because I know, and I, it's not a difference of many numbers, uh, from what I remember from the beginning. So, it's just, if you're missing one class, because you had the three people, I think, you're right, it was like, I was like, three or four, so, uh, fantastic. Um, and a graduation rate of that, that magnitude is, is not traditional. So, that's, that's very impressive. Um, the one question, our selfish question from the board, uh, is are there any, uh, of you that are students slash teachers, are you on curriculum development committees? Not yet. Okay. Because obviously...
Some are, though. I can see out in the audience...
I'm seeing a couple. Because obviously, for us to sort of develop a curriculum, and you're at the front lines of getting this educational exposure, you know, for us, you know, when people say, "Why are you doing this, Merrimack?", that's exactly why we're doing that. We have, you know, people who are getting to the next level, they're going to be on the forefront of educational skill sets, because we did it at this point, and now that we have greater expectations built on us as, from, you know, governments and, and entities, you know, higher than us, it's going to give us the tools within our district to implement successful programs. So, you know, when you look at, it's not only is it a great deal, we got great curriculum, great content, but you guys, we expect to pay dividends, not just as students, but how the district can plan to move forward and, and improve and succeed. So, uh, it's the big picture of it, and, you know, selfishly from us, you know, thank you for taking the time out of your lives to plant the seeds throughout our district to be able to do that. So, it's definitely a two-way street, and I'm so glad that you guys stepped up to, to the plate to be able to do that. Um, I know that there was hint at, you know, whether there was going to be a next cohort, because it was a great, I, I think it was you that mentioned it, you know, what the next cohort, you know, might have an opportunity to do. So, that's obviously what's next for us as a district, and I think Mark's going to have to answer that one. And, um, has there been expression of interest already?
There has, and, um, the first step is to, um, you know, we're always about a continuous improvement, and so, the, the next step would be to convene, uh, this group with, um, Audrey and, and myself to, um, understand what went, what went well, and what areas need to be worked on to improve for next time, and, uh, we're going to plan for that early in the next semester, and then after that, we will see where that takes us, but we, uh, have a great interest in pursuing, uh, moving forward.
Because, you know, honestly, we're very lucky in New Hampshire that we can find great talent, you know, who have bachelor's degrees to get on the floor running, except fifteen years of, of teaching experience, and that brings a lot to the table already. There's, I'm from New York, and I think you're from Connecticut. You can, after three years of teaching, you couldn't stay in a classroom if you didn't have a masters. So, giving people the opportunity to, to grow their skills and then get the masters, and having this kind of opportunity with Southern New Hampshire, I mean, we are right now geared up for some great success. So, we are kind of almost paralleling it without the state requirement, so, it's excellent information. But, um, thank you very much for all you're doing. I hope you feel better, and, uh, it's going around, and those kids don't help. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Powell?
Thank you. First of all, I want to echo, um, the comments I made before. Congratulations to each and every one of you. I, as one that is continuing their education myself, I know what it's like, um, to try and juggle work and life and school and everything else. Being in the corporate world, um, educational benefits have been available to me for many, many, many years, and I regret that I did not take advantage of them prior to this, and I'm glad to see that the school district has come into the twentieth century and offering these educational benefits. Yeah, I, I know we're in the twenty-first, but this is something that should have been done a long time ago. Um, and, and I appreciate each of you taking advantage of it. I'm glad that the district was able to do that, and, and I hope that you sell, sell this to your colleagues, um, that if any, anyone comes up and asks, excuse me, it sounds to me as if each of you has had a positive experience, um, you know, dig in, dig into the district and, and encourage others to take advantage of this. Um, you know, each story that you shared, and I'm sure there's many more for those that didn't come to the table tonight, um, you know, it's just, maybe, maybe the person you talk to just needs that one little extra push to, to be able to do that. The other comment that I wanted to make is, I heard from, from many of you about how, um, you're bringing what you learned real-time back into the district. I understand exactly what you're, what you're saying, because I'm able to do the same thing with my, my job as well, and it, and it makes me stop and wonder that, are we really doing a disservice to not just, um, college graduates that are going into the educational field, but any college graduate that feels like they need to get a masters right away out of school? Maybe this is a, a time to start think, rethinking how advanced degrees, um, are, are given, or not getting, given, but obtained. Um, it doesn't have to be right when you're out of school. Get a little experience, and from what you've said, uh, you know, what you bring to the table during the class is just as valuable as what you're taking away from the table. So, thank you very much for sharing that, and, um, I look forward to seeing you guys in May in cap-and-gown.
Mr. Schneider?
Yeah, for, I'd certainly like to offer my congratulations to everyone here. Um, I'll give an example. My wife, who was in high tech for twenty-five or more years, um, had a certification in teaching out of college, and took up teaching sort of in this, no, I'm not going to say twilight, because if she's watching, she'll kill me, um, but in, in later part of her career. And, um, she, over the last two and a half years, on her own accord, um, got her masters degree in education, and it was a crafted masters degree through a local university, not at, not SNU, but a local university that gave her the flexibility of some online, some in, in-person. And, um, and it was in technology integration, but it was a fine tune for what she needed. Um, and a couple of comments on that is, one, her being sort of on her own was a big missing of sort of the cohort. I mean, she, she had to search out people in her classes and stuff, but when she brought it back to the district, it's hard to find people that are of the same, you know, took similar classes, the same ilk and things like that. So, I saw her struggle through that, and the benefit that you guys have of being in a cohort was great. But the other thing is, is that in looking, and, and we all have in front of us sort of your course list of what you took, um, the challenge that I have, as you, to Mark and the rest, as you look at the cohorts moving forward, is see if you can add some customization to the cohort that you do. Um, for example, uh, if you have certain, if you've got thirty people in the cohort, there's certain core that you take, but then maybe there's a branch you could take that's more technology-based, or branch you could take that's more, you know, curriculum development-based or something, because I think it's a good thing to have teachers with masters educations in our district, but it's also good to have some specialization to fill in, because as the technology changes, we talk about twenty-first century learner, well, I contest that in ten years, the definition of that will be completely different than it is today. Um, I know it was from two years ago. So, I, but the challenge I have for administration in the cohort is see if you can add some customization branches to the next cohort to offer a couple disciplines potentially on top of it, so. But anyway, definitely, congratulations.
Did you want to say something, Ms. Rogers?
Yeah, Mr. Schneider brings up a very good point, that customization piece, and that really has been a very strong component of this. Uh, I've had conversations, uh, with Mark. For example, when I taught the technology class and said, "What are the district goals? How can we adapt the syllabi as we go through the program?" So, I think that's also something to remember, keep, keep going with, um, what, uh, what are the district goals in this? So, not only customize toward technology or a leadership strand, but what does Merrimack need? Uh, I think, to me, that's one of the best values in the onsite cohort as we work with districts around the state. What do you need? What is important in your district? What challenges are your teachers facing? And you customize each syllabi, and you work with district teachers to, you know, and, and administrators to teach the classes. That's been wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Walyumi?
I'd also like to congratulate you all. Um, I know firsthand, I had, um, gotten my masters at SNUHU, and I had been working full-time about maybe fourteen years, and I was pregnant with my now-oldest child, and I was in one of my first couple of classes, and I thought, "What am I doing?" And it was just class by class, and it was so worth it at the end, and now it's, it's been a few years. Um, but I'd like to thank you, there were a couple of you that pointed out, I think, some of the, I would call them e-extra benefits of going to school as an adult learner, um, and I found it very rewarding as well, um, to learn as an adult with some experience and really supplement some of the things that I had already learned or been doing in the business world, in my case. Um, but a couple of those, um, like the tech tools, for example, you know, I mean, being able to take new tools, learn it, and then, as we said earlier, to propagate it throughout the district is a huge benefit. Um, and then secondarily, um, is just the networking, you know, to be able to, and, and that was, I think, touched on a little bit, of, of having your colleagues in different schools that you maybe wouldn't interact with if you didn't do this, and being able to say, "Hey, how are you guys doing it over there? How are you doing it over there?" And then even more globally, right? Because you're within a broader Southern New Hampshire community, and I found myself, you know, kind of tapping some of my classmates, and it might have been over, um, you know, some, some things that I was working on for work that I needed another opinion on, or wondered how they were doing something in their organization, so, and I, I didn't, thank you for reminding me, um, of those added benefits and the added value that that's also giving back to the district. But, again, congratulations so much to a job well done and a lot of hard work.
And before I, I wrap up, I just want to clarify, Mr. French and I did not go off to China on our own. We were, we were, we were chaperones of the Chinese exchange program, uh, for the high school students, in case anybody had that, that idea. Before we wrap up, I want to thank you for, uh, a great presentation. Again, congratulate the graduates on their work. I want to thank Ms. Rogers and, and Ms. Heath, uh, for both bringing and delivering the program to us, and I think there's a group that has been underlooked, uh, overlooked in this process, which is, are the instructors that we delivered from, uh, the district, right? Experienced educators, administrators, uh, who helped to deliver the course content. Um, and so, I want to thank them as well. Uh, clearly, this was a win-win, uh, relationship for our district as well as, uh, Southern New Hampshire University, and, uh, I think the future holds great promise for, for this model. So, thank you very, very much, and congratulations. Thank you. And that takes us to item number five on tonight's agenda, reconsideration of Merrimack-Middle School intersection. I would invite to the table Mr. Ken Clinton, Chief Police, Chief of Police, Mark Doyle, uh, from the Department of Public Works, Mr. Kyle Fox, uh, Fire Chief Mike Courier, and, uh, we will be represented by, uh, Business Administrator Chevonnell.
Captain John Manuelli.
Oh, and Captain John Manuelli. I'm sorry for overlooking you. I didn't have you on my sheet. Um, just a bit of background, um, not too long ago, uh, a design was presented to this board, uh, for a proposed intersection, uh, on Madeline Bennett Drive that contained a roundabout, which seemed to address a number of concerns that the district, the busing company, et cetera, had, uh, related to the intersection. The board approved that design, and, uh, the developer, uh, Mr. Clinton as the engineer for the developer, uh, are set to present that plan to the planning board tomorrow evening. I came to our attention last week that apparently there are concerns about this design with, uh, Chief of Police, the Fire Chief, and the Department of Public Works. We have tremendous partnerships with each of you and highly value your opinion, and thought that before this went forward to the planning board, since we had not heard these concerns, that it made sense to hear directly from you, uh, those concerns, so that the board can fully understand what they are, um, and hopefully, uh, come to a design that satisfies everyone's requirements. So, I don't know...
I'll start, I guess.
Excellent. Thank you, Chief Courier.
Uh, just kind of, uh, well, good evening, members of the board, and Mr. Chair, Mr. Vice Chair. Uh, it's a pleasure to be here this evening, and I also like to congratulate the masters program. That sounds fantastic. Fantastic program. Congratulations. Excellent work. Uh, just a little background on how the process works. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, when a new project comes into the community, it goes through community development, and about four years ago, three and a half, four years ago, we were having a lot of, uh, I don't know how to put the correct verbiage here, but we're having a lot of issues with our customers being the builders, developers coming into Merrimack, because there was so many, uh, different, I guess, uh, requirements put out there on what they can do, what they can't do. Uh, one group would say, "Go ahead." The second group would say, "No, don't do that." So, about three and a half, almost four years ago, uh, there was a big move to take the building department, the health department, and move it under the fire department. That was done, and throughout that whole process, what we were able to do was all come under one umbrella with the same goals to serve the citizens of the community and serve our customers that are building or developing within the community. And, uh, we've been getting rave reviews from all of those individuals, and it's working very well. To move forward, what we have done also within that process was included the police department and the public works department. Uh, and that was the final, I guess, the straw that went in to complete the structure of what we tried to do for the community. And, uh, by doing that, we're able to look at a project, review the project, and come up with a single meeting that pretty much meets the needs of our customers. As you notice, I started earlier saying ninety-nine percent. Well, this was one of the pers, one percent that kind of slipped through the cracks that we did not see upfront, okay? I think there was, uh, a move just to try to get it to the school board so they can understand it, so everybody, but during that process, things got a little bit askew. So, once we found out what was going on in the process, we looked at it, and we did a lot of study. Uh, Kyle Fox and Fire Marshal Manuelli are up front, and you can see the police chief and I are back here, because the majority of the work, the evaluation, the history of about roundabouts and what was proposed, they did the work. So, I really want to turn it over to Kyle to let him do a orientation to start and kind of give you the background on the history of what roundabouts do and what our recommendations would, are. And then Fire Marshal, uh, Manuelli has actually, uh, driven to multiple roundabouts within our local area, and he has some information he'd like to put on, too.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, thank you all for having us this evening. Um, I think it's great that we can get together and kind of brainstorm. It, it really is the, the missing piece to this puzzle. Um, the developer I know has kind of felt like a ping-pong ball going between us and you folks, and, and, um, I, I think this is, what was needed all along is to get all of our folks together and, and have a good discussion about it, so I'm happy that's taking place. Uh, let me start by giving a little bit of a history of, of how we got to, to our, through our part of the process. Um, the, the Old Blood subdivision, um, which is now called Chestnut Hill subdivision, has been going on for many years now. It started with a different engineering group and, and development group, and, um, it's now merged into the, the folks that presented... and it's now merged into the, the folks that presented to you a month or two ago. In March and April of last year, there was a lot of discussion between their folks and, and the town entities. And they made a formal plan submission to the planning board. At that time, all of our entities weighed in on, on the different options they had proposed. And in fact, the first option that, that was presented to the planning board was a modified curved intersection from what you see on the left up there. And, and from, from public works perspective, we didn't care for that alternative. Working with Mr. Clinton and his folks, they, they generated nine different concepts for, for the intersection. And we went back and forth to, to see what we felt would meet everybody's needs. And we kind of focused them in on, on one of those nine, which is very similar to that intersection. At that point, the developer took that proposal to the Highway Safety Committee meeting in, on May eighth. And there was a fair amount of discussion there. The meeting, the, the agenda item was continued to the June ninth meeting. And two things came out of the June ninth meeting. By a five-four vote, the Highway Safety Committee voted to endorse the curved alignment intersection that you see. And they endorsed having the, some school folks and bus folks work with the public works department to evaluate the, the potential delay of the, the intersection caused school buses and, and taking into account potential bell delays and, and, and all the issues that that would create. So, so we did that and working with Mr. Chevonnell and the, and the bus folks, myself and, and our summer interns, we, we did a, I think, a fairly good job at, at studying it as best we could, given that the intersection isn't currently there. And those results were submitted. I think you all have probably seen that. And then to fast forward to today, so between that, that April, May, June timeframe and two weeks ago, we hadn't seen any other plans. So from our perspective, the only plan that was on the table was the curved intersection. We received on November twenty-fifth, the new plan set, which contained the roundabout concept that, that you folks had seen for our review prior to the planning board meeting, which is set to take place tomorrow night. So that, that's what really kicked off the, the discussion. Speaking from public works perspective on, on the, the two concepts and the pros and cons that, that we see, anytime public works looks at a, looks at a public subdivision or, or any development, foremost in our minds are, how is the traveling public going to get through it? Is it safe? Is it consistent? And can we maintain it effectively and cost effectively? Both things factor in. So in, in looking at, looking at these concepts, we, our hesitation with the, the roundabout largely derives from, from the standpoint of the, one of our major goals is to always put the right traffic treatment for the right traffic and maintain consistency. One of the manuals we use, and it's used throughout the country, is called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. And the purpose of that manual, it's a federal document, is to give drivers, no matter where you are in the country or even Puerto Rico, to give a uniform application to how you're driving. The signs you see are the same, the striping you see is the same, everything is the same. And it, and it's geared toward giving drivers, especially today where there's more and more distractions for drivers, to give them a uniform experience on the road, which, which leads to a more safe experience. So using that as a guideline, we, we delved into why would a roundabout be appropriate or why would it not be? And just to be upfront, in, in the end, we determined that it would not be appropriate. The roundabouts are a great, great, great thing. We've, we've had two intersections in town that we have preliminary designs to consider roundabouts. Where roundabouts are most beneficial is from a traffic capacity standpoint. They put through a lot more traffic than either a four-way stop intersection or a signalized intersection. And the second benefit is when you have an intersection that has crash histories. Because they, they naturally slow down traffic to get through them. They, they tend to lessen the amount of accidents and the, the bigger benefit is they lessen the severity of the accidents. Because of the feature of the roundabout where everybody is always moving to the right, when you do have accidents, they're glancing blows rather than T-bones or head-on collisions. So, so in, in looking at what, what is the appropriate intersection, I went to that manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices again and started simple and said, well, what's the requirements for a stop sign? And the, to meet the warrant for a stop sign or a yield sign, the warrant is actually the same. It requires two thousand transactions per day, be it pedestrians, bicycles, cars, on, on average. Two thousand per day average through the week or six thousand per any day or a history of accidents. In this case, I didn't see that we had, we would meet any of those. Comparing the two concepts, I think they both have a lot of benefits. The, both concepts take out that, that bump out as, as you enter the middle school where the, the sidewalk kind of bumps out into the travel lane. Both concepts will, will take that bump out, so it'll allow two vehicles to entrance the middle school, to enter the middle school. Both concepts will address the bus stacking issue. It's not shown on the concept to the left. But what, what, what I've discussed with the, with the Meridian engineers is to take the, the, um, the road as it's entering the cul-de-sac, uh, the roundabout as you see it and put that on the, the curved intersection. So you'd still have the, the striped pavement on that right, what is currently the travel lane where the buses do assemble in the afternoons. There'd be a striped island to keep the buses back from the intersection to allow for good sight distance. And then they would be able to queue into the traffic as, as they would in either concept. The, both concepts provide traffic calming. The roundabout from the obvious benefit of, of taking all the traffic and running it through a roundabout, which the typical design speeds for those are fifteen to twenty miles an hour. Madeline Bennett Lane itself, it already is kind of a traffic calming feature. You've got the, as, as you head towards the middle school up Madeline Bennett Lane, you kind of take a, a right-hand curve and then a left-hand curve. And, and that left-hand curve would be more exaggerated in the, in the Old Blood connection concept. So, so those are a lot of the reasons, engineering-wise, why we, we, we don't prefer the roundabout. Part of my job is also operations and we, we have to look at it at both sides, both ways, engineering-wise and operations-wise. Operations-wise, roundabouts are much more difficult to, to maintain. Obviously, the, the increased difficulty with the winter maintenance is fairly obvious. So there's, there's increased cost here, increased complexity. The long-term maintenance costs as well, depending on what treatment you use, whether it's cobblestones for the, for the center, the, the wide truck portion of the roundabout or concrete. It's additional long-term maintenance that, that would have to be addressed as well. In addition to maintaining whatever features are put into the center island and whatnot. So those are operationally some of the, some of the things that, that make us not, not love the, the roundabout concept in this location. So between traffic volumes and, and everything else, it, it just doesn't warrant it. Some of the features is going back to before the Highway Safety Committee meeting that we, we discussed with Meridian and their folks to, to ensure the safety of, of the, the school, which is obviously a concern for everybody. The, the developer had agreed to install flashing school lights. And, and what they were going to model them after are the ones that public works replaced on Babu's Lake Road, the brand-new ones. Nice solar, they're, they're really sharp. So they're, they're planning on putting that in and we can easily put that into the town code to make it enforceable as a twenty mile an hour school zone. So that would be a, a really good factor. Some other things you can do, even though the stop or yield sign is not warranted, that's not to say it can't be put there. That the MUTCD again specifies clearly that, that stopping yield signs are not to be used for tra, as traffic calming devices. But that's not to say it doesn't ever happen. And in this case, it could. And, and one other feature that I think would maybe appropriate in this location is we do it at our, our main road intersections and some of our curve intersections throughout town as we install streetlights. I think having a streetlight in that location would do a couple of things. One, it would give real good visibility to the school sign, give, give a nice illumination on that. And it, it, it just lights up the whole area to, to make it safer in off-hours. With that, I'll turn it over to John for the Fire Department perspective.
So our perspective on the, on the roundabout rotary.
Captain Manuelli, i- is your green light on?
It is.
It is?
It is. Oh, it's not bright. Very good.
Much better.
Our perspective is, we actually have two, two concerns at this. The first concern is just fire department access. The, the rotary is designed right now, or the proposed rotary, is very tight. And we basically, fire engines are large vehicles, the ladder truck in particular is going to have a very difficult time navigating around the rotary. I actually went out there and measured the curb-to-curb distance and came up with ninety-six feet. I then went to the, if anyone's familiar with the rotary over in Bedford on Galt and Meeting House Road, and I measured that distance and it's actually a hundred and thirty-six feet. So it's a forty-foot wider diameter. I talked with the Goffstown Fire Prevention Officer about the rotary that they have on one fourteen and Wallace Road. And that's roughly ninety-six feet. So I asked him his opinion. He was not in favor of it. He had very strong opinion that they have a difficult time getting their ladder truck around it. And they have actually had, in his words, numerous cases where somebody has driven through the center into the flowers of the, of the rotary because of the positioning of it and the size of it. At the behest of Steve Keach, I then contacted, the, Steve Keach is the engineer who is working with you. I contacted the Fire Chief in Pelham, who also has two rotaries that were recently put in. That's Chief Midgley. I asked him his opinion. He's very much in favor of them. He's got two of them within eight hundred feet of each other. So I asked him, you know, give me your, your rationale on it. And what it is, is it's on Route one eleven, which is a very high-traffic road. They have a lot of traffic. He actually counted twenty-seven cars while talking to me in one minute on the phone. And then I said to him, this is the application that we're looking at in Merrimack. And his thoughts were, well, how are you going to get pedestrians across? And I said, that's exactly what my question to you is. He's, he basically said, we don't have pedestrian crossings over here. It's not a pedestrian area, there's not a lot of pedestrians. The only roundabouts we currently have in Merrimack are the roundabouts on the Fidelity Access Road, which is also not a pedestrian area. There's very few walkers in that area. And our biggest concern, other than fire department access, is simply pedestrian safety. The idea behind a roundabout is to keep traffic moving. There is no area where they're going to be stopping. There's a lot of kids walking out of there. And if anyone's been there, as, as two of my kids have gone through that school and I've been there on nights of dances, there are cars stacked up all over those roads. There are kids coming out en masse going across that area. And my, my concern and the fire department's concern is getting pedestrians safely across an area where there is really no reason to stop because people are coming into the rotary to, can you continue around the rotary traveling? That's our biggest concern.
Thank you. Yeah, just to, um, just to touch on a little bit of the history that Kyle had, I think, described for you early on. When we first got the initial iteration of the road design and included the stop sign, it looked like it would certainly be more than warranted. It allowed for, as John had suggested, it allowed for having an ability to have traffic stopping. So when you have that kind of driver behavior happening, they take that extra moment to kind of look to the left or look to the right only out of, that's what they've always been doing. When they do that, they have more of an ability or more apt to see a kid crossing in front of them or between cars or alike. When you have a rotary design, and my only concern here is when it comes to the pedestrian crossing, just like John had said, you don't have that anymore. You've got a constant flow of traffic. When people are moving, we all know when it comes to driver distraction, people are preoccupied with any number of things that they may otherwise have in their hands or tuning to the radio or adjusting or whatever. I think the last thing we need to have, especially around a school, is an opportunity for drivers not to be slowing down when they're approaching to or coming from a school. Instead, with a rotary design, we have them continuing on and moving through. My other concern, and John had hit it on the head, was when you've got that emergency vehicle response, either whether it's through the response by the fire department, through the apparatus, or police department, or an EMS response. If you've got a problem right there at that rotary, now you've got a huge choke point and nobody's going to move. Whereas if you have just a stop sign, you can kind of restrict traffic to one side of the road or the other. Traffic can move around that with the appropriate traffic direction folks that you put out there. Notwithstanding the, the concerns about it not being warranted otherwise, when you have that kind of design, it just brings up a few other issues that I would be concerned about relative to the, like I said, the ingress and the egress. And the other complication here is that, and John again said it was, at night, after hours, dances and whatnot, you have a boatload of people that are queued up, they're going to queue right into that rotary anyways. Unless you've got barricades out there, which is going to complicate the matter anyway. And when you've got people that are now stacking in the rotary itself, unless you've got somebody out there telling them not to, now you've got even more of an issue or even a major concern, God forbid, something should happen in the rotary. And now you've got to get emergency vehicle traffic through. It's just not going to happen the way you need to have it happen. And that's what we talked about, I think, a little bit at that Highway Safety Committee meeting. The simplest way to address this problem was to keep the vehicle traffic flowing the way it should be. When you have a talk about the rotary, at least in the way that I'm looking at this again, and I'm trying to think off the top of my head, driver behavior. You've got a major traffic increase relatively two times a day, in the morning and in the afternoon, when the traffic's going and coming to the school. Otherwise, you've got not a whole lot of traffic out there. So what's going to happen when there's not a whole lot of traffic out there? People are going to take shortcuts. And you're going to have people that are going to be coming up Madeline Bennett, they're going to be doing that quick look, take the left, right in front of the, the, the round, whatever you may call it, what do you call that thing right in the middle of? In the middle of the rotary, where the flowers are and everything.
Center island.
Center island, thank you. I knew there was a technical term for it. They're going to go to the left of that center island and they're going to go, if they're not careful, right into oncoming traffic because that's driver behavior and we see it all the time. And if there's nobody out there looking and there's not a police car out there monitoring it, this is the kind of thing that's going to happen. That's what's going to happen is when they continue to do that, they're going to think maybe it's okay to do it all the time. So if they're going through there during a period of time when you have that high-traffic flow, there certainly exists the potential of having a major problem, major accident. And that's really kind of where I came from when I started to look at this a little bit more closely as opposed to the stop sign at the end of the driveway heading into the middle school. Really, and that's more or less sums it up for me.
Thank you.
And just to, to end it up on the fire side here and with reference to queuing, one of the things that I have a major concern and John started to hit on to it, is the queuing of the school buses. Kyle had mentioned that the school buses are going to stage a ways back from the intersection so you can see, cars can see entering the intersection. But once they're called up to come forward, they're not going to come one, two at a time. They're going to come, the line's going to move. And they're going to be queued into that roundabout and they're going to stop there until everybody finally gets through it and starts heading up the hill. So we're going to have buses in the roundabout and then you're going to have cars trying to come around the buses in the roundabout on the inside lane, trying to get through and continuing on. So the possibility of having any pedestrians cross there is going to be almost impossible. It's just, just not going to happen. And I think that either we do more studying or I, I don't think we're ready at this point in time to say that's the best solution for that plan.
So, thank you. I very, we all.
Uh, uh, I very, we all, uh, appreciate, uh, the insight that you've provided us. Um, the, I, I guess, Chief, you, you just hit on something that I think is, um, interesting, which is over the average of any given day, um, there isn't a tremendous amount of traffic. As, as Chief Doyle mentioned, right, there are two peak times. But during those two peak times, it's pretty significant, right? We've got forty buses, uh, when we count the, the buses as well as the, uh, special education vehicles. In addition to parents dropping off, picking up, right? Captain, you've seen the pickup after a dance, you know what this is like. Um, the concern is really one of high-traffic volume, right? Which I think is what, uh, I think drove, um, the District's engineer, um, working with, uh, Mr. Clinton, uh, to, to really look at it and say, well, in order to keep those buses flowing, um, we need to somehow keep traffic flowing in this, in this intersection. Uh, the queuing up of the buses, I think, getting ready for pickup is one aspect of it. The other concern that we have as well is the exiting of those buses upon dismissal. Um, and having each one of them stop at an intersection, uh, before moving on. Um, we've got very tight schedules, we all get phone calls, uh, why is my kid on the bus for so long? You know, he got out of school at this time and he didn't get home until this time and, you know, what, you know, why is that? Um, and so based on what we saw through that, that, uh, experiment, the challenge that we had was, how do we do this without adversely impacting the times? And I think we were adding five to ten minutes, uh, to each bus's schedule, uh, coming through that, that intersection. So, nobody more than us appreciates the, the safety concerns, um, and, uh, we value your expert opinion on, on that. Um, I guess what I'm struggling with, and we're, by the way, not the final arbiters of this. We actually appreciate that we were involved in the process as being someone who is, uh, not only a, a landowner, but, uh, in that area, but, um, has, has the primary, uh, focal point for, for the traffic that goes there. Um, so from that perspective, we really wanna understand, or I wanna understand, um, how that concern gets addressed. I've, um, interestingly enough, become far more expert on topics that have nothing to do with education over my tenure as a school board member. And I can, I can tell you, uh, that, uh, that cobblestone innerway that, uh, goes, goes around the center of, uh, a roundabout is called a mountable apron, uh, to be used by larger vehicles in order to make it through these roundabouts. Um, so, I, I, I know far too much about this, as well as far too little. Um, but I'm missing the point, uh, and maybe, Mr. Fox, you, you talked about, uh, the stop signs and how to kinda keep things moving. During those peak times, how will we keep the traffic moving out and moving out safely?
Sure. Um, I, I think the primary way that that will occur is, um, when, when you're looking at traffic studies and, and, and the like, you're always focusing on peak traffic. And those are generally seven to eight in the morning to nine in the morning and four, five, six o'clock in the evening. The, the nice thing about the location and, and the timing of the school buses is that they're off-peak time. Um, be it whether it's the, the dance at the night, or basketball games in the evenings, or the school bus pickups in the morning and in the afternoon. Uh, they're both off-peak, they're all off-peak events. Um, we expect the, the traffic to be very minimal, um, through the intersection during the school times. Um, one of the, one of the comments that, that came up at the Highway Safety Committee meeting was that Old Blood Road will become a cut-through road for the folks on, um, Wilson Hill Road and, and Points West. Um, the geometry, and I don't know if Ken brought it.
Mr. Clinton, uh, we, we actually discussed that at a prior meeting. And Mr. Clinton described, uh, the layout of the development and, um, e- even some s- speed-reducing measures that, that make it clear that the cut-through would not be a shortcut.
Right.
So I think the board got that message.
Okay, thank you. Um, re- regarding, um, safety during the, the, the school bus time, um, one, one other feature that, that although it's not optimal to have the school buses queuing there, um, one of the nice byproducts is that they themselves act as a traffic calming device. Um, right now, the, the configuration of Madeline Bennett is there's two travel lanes with an emergency lane in the middle. So there's thirty-six feet of pavement. Our normal roads are twenty-four feet wide. So when the buses stack in what's now the travel lane, um, parents and, and other traffic has to use the emergency lane. Um, in the, in the proposed concept, be it the, the curve or the roundabout, um, the school buses stacking will, will act as a traffic calming device from the standpoint of now you've got traffic, alternate, uh, two-way traffic right next to each other in, in twelve-foot lanes. And as we all know, you drive next to Jersey Barrier on a road, which the buses will, will emulate. That's a natural traffic calming, um, event, um, because it, it's uncomfortable seeing something that big to your right. So I, I think, just, ju- the, the nature of, of the, the geometry of the road, the, the curviness of the road, um, as, as you approach the, the current curviness of the road, having to take that right-hand turn, then the left-hand turn, the school buses, the off-peak traffic times, um, all of that, um, really gives me a sense of confidence that, that the, the accident rate on either concept is, is about zero. That would be my opinion.
Okay. Uh, the, and so, just so I'm clear, the, 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 the sweeping curve design has a stop sign, uh, from Old Blood Road coming into Madeline Bennett and a stop sign coming from the middle school onto Madeline Bennett.
That's, I suppose, to be decided and, and that could be something you, you recommend, um, as a board. Um, engineering-wise, no stop signs are, are warranted. The, the traffic vol- volumes on Madeline Bennett are, are sufficiently low that, that, um, stop signs and yield signs wouldn't be warranted. Um, so having one, um, at the, at the driveway gives the opportunity for pedestrians to cross, um, safely. Um, should, should it be desired to, to put one on Madeline Bennett? Although it wouldn't be, um, wouldn't be typical, um, to have a, a stop sign on a, a road with no intersection, per se, allowing for, for me to call the, the school entrance or driveway.
Right.
Um, so that, that wouldn't be typical and, and, and that concept did come up at the Highway Safety Committee meeting. And, and one of our concerns there, um, much like, uh, Chief Doyle's comment about vehicles seeing no traffic and ignoring the, the roundabout and heading the wrong way on it. Um, the other twenty-three hours a day when there's, there's not much traffic there, people are, are they gonna run the stop sign and, and, and ignore it when they're not supposed to ignore it? Um, that, that's a, that's a question we, we face all the time in Public Works. Uh, we've, we get an amazing amount of sign requests and, and you get sign blight. And, and what we always try and, um, educate folks on is, we wanna provide signage that, that's appropriate, because if you get too much signage out there, then people ignore all the signs.
Sure.
And, and that's not a good situation.
So, before I open it up to the board, I, I just wanna make sure I understand. So the, the proposal for the sweeping curve has no stop signs in it whatsoever?
It, it does have a stop sign on the design I have. It has a stop sign coming from the middle school, entering Madeline Bennett. There should be a stop sign right there.
And so, and so that's, that, that's my concern. I, I appreciate, Mr. Fox, you're, you're talking about the traffic calming measures, uh, of the queued-up buses, uh, coming up Mad- uh, on Madeline Bennett for traffic coming up. The converse of the question is the traffic flow leaving the school at the end of the day. In particular, those forty buses and, uh, I'm not lying, literally hundreds of parent vehicles, right? That, that are, are now exiting. Um, how do we ensure with a, a single stop sign that we keep a constant flow of, of traffic through that stop sign?
Well, each, each vehicle would have to make the stop, look, uh, both ways and, and make the turn safely. Um, a, a second alternative, if, if, if that concern is, is the overlying concern, would be to, you, you could opt to put a yield sign there. That way, you know, with, with plenty of sight distance to the right, which could easily be, um, obtained with some tree clearing and, and whatnot, um, the buses could get a really good view. And being such an off-peak time, I suspect there won't be much traffic and, and the buses could get a good view and, and they wouldn't need to make the stop. Incidentally, when, when, uh, working with Mr. Desmond and Mr. Chevanel on the, the bus timing schedule, what we did to try and approximate kind of a, a worst-case scenario was we made each bus stop for a full five seconds, which I don't think would be, you know, in, in practical sense, what would happen. Uh, but to try and err on the side of, let's see how bad we're screwing things up. Um, and we went to, we went to that side. And, and, and then the net result from the, the free flow of, of today's to the, the stop-conditioned test, um, was that the largest variability in total travel time to get to the destination at the high school was three minutes. The variability in the time from when the first school bus entered the Madeline Bennett intersection was five minutes.
Okay.
So there's more variability in the time the school buses leave the school than we found in the free-flow or stop condition.
The only other alternative or option you could actually just consider is similarly what we have happening every day right down here on Babusik Lake Road or Guerra Drive. We have a crossing guard that expedites the traffic in. And in the afternoon, he's moving that forty caterpillar line of buses right out of the Bus- Busik Lake Road to move them around to the middle school or how, or the upper elementary school here and do the pickups, and then he moves them back out and around, so. And that's, that quick burst, you know what I mean? And so it's, they're already there or they're gonna be queued up to get them in. And I would imagine they're gonna be coming out in a similar fashion. So he could certainly, or that person could certainly be there to help expedite the traffic out of, including any folks that are, that pick up their kids or otherwise.
That's an added expense, though, to your budget, right?
To whose budget?
I, yeah. I think, I think they're in your budget.
They are, yes, they are.
Okay, just checking.
The, the other parallel here is if you look at the Reed's Ferry School, it's a very similar, uh, situation to what would be happening at the middle school in the sense that you have a stop sign. You have a, actually, in Reed's Ferry's case, you have a higher traffic, uh, Pearson Road, it's a much higher-traffic road. But it's the same situation, the buses are coming up to the end of the driveway. And I, I would probably hazard ninety-plus percent of them are gonna be making a left turn onto Pearson. So it's very similar to what we would be seeing here.
I, I think the model is similar. I, I think the volume is probably where we differ. I believe we have about eight buses at Reed's versus the forty at the middle school. So tha- that's the only difference. Um, I noticed Mr. Chevanel had his hand up and I apologize, guys, I'll, I'll turn it over to you. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, um, greetings, gentlemen. Nice to have you here. And I just wanna let you know, I all, I respect your, your expertise and your opinions. And I've been, uh, giving this a lot of thought and, uh, listening to your presentation. Um, when you look, uh, in the past meetings that we have, believe it or not, I agree with a lot of what you're saying. Um, I agree that the roundabout as constructed and designed right now is nearly not, um, large enough to contain school buses. Um, during the power outage when I was driving around and I had my Ford F-two fifty-eight-foot-bed extended cab truck with four-wheel drive, I had difficulty making it around that roundabout myself. Uh, so I think there needs to be a little bit tweaking there. Um, when the Safety Committee met on May eighth, I believe, Tom, are you still there? Yeah, Tom. Tom Toussot was there representing the, uh, District and he brought this back for me to look at. And we, uh, got the, uh, Transportation Company involved. In fact, Greg Stinson, the Vice President of STA, uh, down in their headquarters in Rhode Island, uh, came up to take a look at it, which prompted, uh, a meeting of, uh, Mr. Ken Clinton, the engineer, I believe, Attorney Greg Michael, um, myself, um, Greg Stinson, the VP of STA, and, uh, Rich Desmond, our Transportation Coordinator, in my office, to look at these plans and express our concern. And our main concern isn't in the morning, is the, um, afternoon, um, exit from the school, where you have twenty buses in a time, moving like a big yellow slow caterpillar through the curve as it is right now, just straight through that, um, that roadway unencumbered. Um, and by having a stop sign there, um, it would, STA's main concern was it would have to look left, it would have to look right, it would have to look left, it would have to look right again. I'm not sure about the line of sight, even with trees cut down. And their concern was just getting out on a roadway with a sweeping curve. Uh, there's more of a probability in their mind, being a company that's, uh, mainly Massachusetts-based and Rhode Island-based, where these sorts of things are, uh, more prevalent than in New Hampshire, was, uh, a T-bone accident, which would be much more serious. And I, I hear us all speaking like traffic engineers. And I heard that, um, it would be difficult for pedestrians to make their way through the roundabout. However, in my traffic engineer hat, I see them walking up the, uh, curbway if they're coming up Madeline Bennett, not crossing through the crosswalk. And if they're coming from Old Blood going towards the school, I see them walking on the left-hand side of the road and taking a left there and then crossing probably in front of the school where there is a crosswalk. So I don't see the need for, for anybody to go through a crosswalk. And quite frankly, I've, you know, I've lived up here for thirty years now, but I grew up down south of, uh, this state and I'm very familiar with them. I've never seen anybody crazy enough to walk through one of these. So, we're all playing traffic engineer. And the one thing that that leads me to is, I'd really feel comfortable if a traffic study was done uh, by the likes of a Steve Perno, and you're all familiar with that name. Uh, when I was, um, in charge of overseeing the construction of the middle school, uh, the layout of Madeline Bennett Lane, the reason why it's thirty-six feet wide, um, the reason why the school district would like Old Blood to be an access road, which would give us a secondary egress in case something did happen in Madeline Bennett and you couldn't get your, your fire vehicles in there. Um, you know, I had to do two traffic studies, one with Steve Perno and one with Bob Bolinger as far as the, the intersection goes at Madeline Bennett and McQuestion and Babusik Lake Road. And although, you know, we're all well-intentioned, I think we all want the same thing. We want, uh, to be able to get where we're going in the morning, get there in a reasonable time. Uh, we want, uh, to preserve the, the, the safety of, uh, the kids and, you know, gosh knows, it's more, it's very expensive to fix a car, so we don't wanna get any, any accidents. But, again, putting my traffic engineer hat on, if you do have an accident in a roundabout, it's more of the slow speed variety, 'cause I think I heard Kyle say that it usually, cars entering usually enter at fifteen to twenty miles an hour. And although you would have those flashing yellow si- signs that would be twenty miles an hour, um, they're signs, that are just twenty miles an hour. When you get into a roundabout, you're pretty much forced into that, or you're driving a little recklessly. So, the stop sign just at Madeline Bennett at a driveway, uh, that bothers me. Um, I'd like to have some discussion about that. The roundabout design not being big enough, that, that bothers me too. Um, there's a lot more que- Um, there's a lot more questions that we have to ask as far as both these designs go. And I both think we, we have the same goal in the end. And, um, I, I, I think, uh, some more research and I'd really like to see what a, a certified traffic engineer would come up with, uh, with a fresh set of eyes. And that's what I would be told if I were doing this project and came to Public Works or the police department. Uh, I definitely couldn't just do something like this on my own with your approval. It would have to be through an outside agency. Um, so that's about really all I have to say on the matter. That, uh, the transportation company really has issue with the, uh, stop sign at the end of Madeline Bennett. They feel the roundabout as a concept is safer. They're used to them. Um, and, um, Nashville North, Nashville South has them. There's one down by Riviera College that my daughter travels every day that I remember when, uh, it used to be Everett Turnpike, not Everett Turnpike, Route, Route Three, uh, South and it used to be East Dunstable Road. There used to be a traffic light and it used to back the tra- traffic light up on East Dunstable all the way practically to the highway. Uh, now that you have the roundabout there, uh, there's no traffic issues whatsoever. And so that handles a large capacity in the morning and in the afternoon. And even, you know, mid-afternoon when the traffic is very light, sometimes that's when the worst accidents can happen. You know, when there's no one around and you're not paying attention and all of a sudden a bus or a parent or whatever, you know, doesn't make that second look over his or her right shoulder to see what's coming down the road. So that's a bit of my concern because I also, when I come here, go, go down, uh, Pearson Road and I have to look over my right shoulder to see who's there. And that's, uh, that's challenging sometimes getting out on that road. So that's, that's about all I, I have to say. But, you know, I appreciate everybody's efforts in this and, um, putting our heads together and trying to come up with some resolution. I think, uh, be very helpful so we can get this developer underway and doing what he needs to do, which is start pounding some nails and making some money and getting some kids into the schools. So, uh, that's a bit. That's, that's all I have to say. And thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you. Um, so I've monopolized, uh, the conversation here. Um, I'm going to turn to others to ask questions. Did you have a comment? Oh, Vice Chair Barnes.
Well, there are a couple of things, um, that you brought up that, um, I found a little alarming. Um, first that you did a lot of the study of this area over the summer, so it was not applicable to its active use. And you're talking about having your interns over the summer and that, that's when they're handy. Uh, they don't get to see it in real time and, and, and real experience. Um, another thing you mentioned, um, that alarmed me was you said there was no stop sign, you said there was a stop sign. So I'm not sure we're being sold the right thing for, um, Madeline Bennett Drive at the end of our property. So I want to make sure we know what the real plan is. Um, I, I think there might be some conflicting information there, which gives us pause to, to feel, I think, comfortable. Um, at least from my point of view, I don't want to speak on behalf of my colleagues. Um, another thing you said was that the buses are used for a calming factor. Well, unfortunately buses aren't the only reason we have bum rushes of traffic. We have basketball tournaments, um, with our students. We have plays, we have parent nights, we have back-to-school nights. We have, um, the dances that you talked about and there's no calming buses for you. They're not coming. Uh, so now we have a bum rush of traffic and no one to calm it. But, um, it's going to be hundreds of cars. Um, when you talk about beginning of school and close of school, um, you talk about two thousand incidents a day kind of is an intersection that would need stop signs and that kind of thing. Well, we have, um, staff by the dozens, you know, in the, in the hundred, hundreds number for that building between paras, lunch, teachers, you know, administrators, et cetera. Um, not to mention your school resource officer who's a great asset there. Um, so a little plug. But, um, you do, I, I'd be surprised that you didn't have two thousand incidents. Um, so, and the, the major part for me, um, we got some information, um, obviously there are memorandums that we got, you know, about our role being advisory, but we are a big player in this. And I understand, um, your June meeting where the, uh, Highway Safety Committee had a vote of five to four. Um, can you tell me which of the school district members of that committee voted for this? Because I think the answer is zero.
It was zero.
Right. And that's my concern, that all, all the people that came to the table that are on the school district side of it, knowing that it's so impactful to our operations, that you didn't look at it and say, well, maybe we should look at this again. It was a five-four-zero and therefore okay. And obviously from our perspective, from the people we hired to, to do the job to represent this district, didn't think it was okay. But it was the end of the discussion until we started talking amongst ourselves with the developer who was open enough to meet with our engineers and come up with a Plan B that we might find comfort in. So, um, you know, we talk about our collaborative nature, but I don't think this is the right example of it. I, I'm, I'm disappointed that, um, go ahead, I mean, can I?
Well, I, well, why don't you finish your statement and then I'll bet you can address your concern.
But, um, but, you know, when every member of the school district that was at that table wasn't comfortable with it, why didn't we keep talking? Instead of just having a five-four vote moving forward. And that's my concern too, that we're not on page with, with you on this. But, um, when we tried to find a comparable, a compromise solution, um, it's us and you and no one seems to be talking. That's not collaborative. Uh, this example is not collaborative to me. So that's my point so far.
Chief, would you, would you like to say something?
Yeah, briefly, just on that point, uh, that Ms. Barnes brought up was that, uh, it wasn't designed to collaborate. Uh, we were presented with a design that included a stop sign and that was what was presented to us by the developer for our approval. There was no A or B, or if you didn't like, choose another one or come up with a different solution. There was none of that. When we got this plan in front of us at the Highway Safety Committee, it was, this is what we're presenting in front of the planning board. And if you have an opportunity to look, review it, chime in on it, discuss it, that's great, take a vote on it, whether you approve it or not, we'll move forward. And really that was our direction. Matter of fact, I think the minutes even reflect that. I hadn't brought them with me, but it'll say very clearly that this was what we were given as a charge by the developer as was so directed by the planning board at the time. So it wasn't an opportunity for us to sit down and rehash this, come up with a separate design or a series of designs to be considered further.
No, but I think, you know, and I'm, I understand that you had a vote to make and you made the vote. But when you saw that, you know, I think there's an opportunity for dialogue. I think we as board members are asked to reflect on votes when, when circumstances change or when you realize the dynamic of those raised concerns might actually change your position. You know, obviously with that, you know, we, we voiced our concerns with our votes and it, it went forward. And honestly, at the end of the day, we're charged with, with keeping these students safe and you are as well, I know, obviously. Um, but, you know, we have, we're at the front lines for that and, and we had great concerns and it didn't open dialogue. I thought that was a great opportunity lost to do so.
I think when we started the conversation out, Chief Courier mentioned the, the fact that there, there's a process that works ninety-nine percent of the time. I think we're dealing with the exception here. I, I, I would say that's probably true. And so rather than, um, looking back and saying, which, which we should because we want to learn from this. But as in terms of, you know, getting the poor developers who, who seem to be getting batted back and forth, uh, you know, dealing with these competing requirements, the best thing for us to do would be to look to the future and say, okay, what can we do moving forward in order to, to make sure that we can come up with a solution that's going to work for everybody? Um, I, I think, I think keeping that focus is critical. Mr. Powell.
Thank you. Well, a lot of what I wanted to say, Matt, summed up very eloquently. Um, I just have a couple of questions and I, I don't know which of the, of the group here would be best to answer it, so feel free to jump in. Um, I'd like to understand why there has to be a through road in the first place. I understand that, you know, it's in the school district's best interest to have a second egress there and I'm all for that. But why does it have to be an open throughway? Why can't it be a gated, um, access much as what's at the courthouse? Or, um, you know, anyplace else that we have that in town?
That, um, in the end, that would be a planning board decision. Um, from way back when this process started many years ago, it was a planning board requirement that the subdivision would connect through uh, for safety of the subdivision and, and of the school. Uh, so that's a planning board requirement.
So it's a planning board issue?
Exactly.
All right. Um, and Chief Doyle, you, you answered my, my question. Um, I had the same question with the five-four vote. What was the other alternative? And if I understood you correctly, there was no other alternative. It was, this is it, do you like it or not?
That's correct.
Okay. Um.
I do believe it was the point to, would you endorse it or not endorse it?
Okay.
That's what the charge was, like it or not. This is where we're going. Would you endorse this for safety or would you not endorse it for safety? With a single stop sign there, a through road, pedestrian crossings, that's, that was a safe design.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much for, for clearing that up. Um, I, you know, Chief Doyle, I appreciate you, um, kind of throwing out the crossing guard option. Um, I, I think we shouldn't rely on that. I think that would be a good stopgap measure. Um, however, we've seen it in the past when that position has been up on the chopping block during budget time. And I would hate to rely on, um, the whim of a, you know, whichever board ends up taking it over to, to do away with that position and we're right back at square one. So I think we need to move forward in trying to come up with a, a, a very good solution. Um, you know, I echo you, Chief Courier, and, and I wish this conversation had happened much, much sooner than, than what it is right now.
Well, I think what happened also is as I ended up the conversation, uh, I did mention that there was a lot of confusion with this and further study would, would probably be needed. And I ended with that. And that echoes Mr. Chevanel also, seems to echo a lot of individuals here on the, uh, board. And I, I, I think that's where we are. We were given, this is your option, do you like it or not? Yeah, that's a very safe option. The roundabout never came into play until later on in the process.
Okay.
So as I said, we had a process that was kind of, it didn't follow through with all the parties involved. Where if, uh, Mr. Chevanel would have had a meeting with the, uh, school bus and the lawyers and everybody talking about a roundabout, I do believe that DPW should have been at that meeting, Fire Marshal should have been at that meeting. So everybody can discuss the concerns that they have. I don't care about Massachusetts, I really don't. What Merrimack has and what we need to do to move the traffic to ensure safety for our children, okay? And if it's a stop sign or a roundabout, it's designed properly to do that. And there was just a lot of things that were happening behind the scenes on a lot of different avenues that I think we, we need to tonight decide, are we going to let them go or are we going to stop and figure out what we need? And if the traffic study is that by an engineer, then maybe we should have had that traffic study coming in. And then he's going to use the same book that, uh, Mr. Fox uses with reference to how traffic is controlled.
Right.
Absolutely. I'm all set.
All set. Uh, any other questions? Mr. Schneider.
So at least I'll speak for myself, this is, I was never married to the roundabout. I think that all of us at the table were struggling with trying to find a way to try to make sure that the traffic flow during the heavy times didn't bog up because most, all of us are parents. We've all dealt with all the different schools in town, seen, um, what can happen good with a crossing guard, what can happen bad when you get near the high school and the buses freight train out from behind the high school. And if you stop in the wrong place, you'll get run over. Um, and I think to Chief Doyle's comment, um, whether you put one stop sign, three stop signs or whatever, the, the word that you've got to add out there is intelligence. Because depending on the time of day you're there, the activity that's going on, intelligence is the important part. And a crossing guard is one way to do that. Now, I'm going to say something that's controversial, but what the heck. When, when we put Madeline Bennett out there, we had a really long road and the town decided to put a traffic light at that corner. Now, I drive through that intersection multiple times a day. I thought it was the most lame thing in the world. You're in the middle of the country, traffic light, why do you have it? Well, after ten years or nineteen years or whatever, driving through it, it is a very intelligent way to move traffic through that very difficult four-way intersection. Um, at first, I mean, as we all know, during the morning time, the lights stay greener longer to handle the freight trains that go. Whether it's kids going to the high school, buses coming down, buses leaving, whatever, they're there. I also learned that when you're coming from the north part of town on the lake road, if there's any gap in the traffic, the traffic signal goes, oh, there's nobody there and then shuts the light down early. And that used to be a really bad problem when cars would pause and let the buses pull into the, to the, uh, the field dirt lot there. And you'd always yell, don't stop! Because if you stop, then you hit the red light and then everything gets messed up. And somebody at the Department of Public Works said, if we change the flow from clockwise to counterclockwise, it takes it away because then the buses pull in while the cars are stopped and, and then, but when you go, there's no buses turning. So there's intelligence to that traffic signal. Now, we as a board are looking for safety during peak times. And funding, uh, I mean, I, I said, when I saw this mentioned, I said, well, if we can't have a roundabout, then we need to perpetually fund a crossing guard twice a day forever to do this, you know, and it's got to be a guaranteed. The other way you can do that is to put another traffic signal down there that has intelligence, that at certain times of the day understands the way the traffic flow is going to be so that it allows more traffic to come out during the right times in through whatever. Now, there's an expense to that, I understand, but it is a sort of upfront expense. And I'm assuming, I'm not an expert, that the cost is minimal for maintenance down the road of it and stuff. I mean, I would see them working on the traffic lights down on that main corner a lot. But it is one way without investing to keep, still keep the, the way it is, keep the stop sign the way it is. But what you do is you need to cau- cause all sides, all three ways to stop and control it right with logic at the peak times of the day. Um, it also will help during the, the nighttime, uh, dances and things like that. Um, and during the day, you could have it very short duration so that, you know, like, like it is in the corner of the lake road in McQuestion, shorter durations. There's a way to do that, I think, to keep the structure the same. But instead of a stop sign, I know it, it probably breaks every rule for traffic volume. But frankly, it solves the problem during those peak times because it does allow sort of that, that freight training to occur. The other comment I'll make, the, the, you guys talked about the, um, the Reed's Ferry Road. Well, that's what you've got today with Madeline Bennett because it's a really long road and you can queue a lot of stuff up. Well, if we put the corner where it is at the middle school, there's no way to back anything up on that because the way the buses circle around the back, they've got to all come out at once, otherwise you get gridlocked there. So being able to, uh, make the flow occur during the right times, I think is going to be critical. So.
Thank you. Ms. Welyumi.
I mean, I, I think that we all have the same objective in mind. It is the safety of our citizens and our children. The roundabout is not, or the intersection is not built yet. Um, we're still at a point that we can make the right decisions and the right things going forward. Um, you know, this, it leaves me with a conundrum because I sit there and I ask a lot of the questions and, you know, such as, you know, why does that street have to go through? You know, what's the cost benefit of the risks of having merging traffic versus the risks of having a gated? Um, I, I can't get past that. And there's probably just more to the background and history. I'll have to go back through some of the planning board meeting minutes. But I think of the community that I live in. Um, I'm off of Davis Road and there's just one intersection and there's, I don't even know, a hu- a couple hundred how, homes that are just going in and out of that one area and there's a gate by the condo association. But I can't get past what's that cost benefit of the, you know, having the throughway access versus a gated access, um, particularly given the sensitivity of the students and the traffic, um, that surrounds the school-type traffic. Different than, you know, perhaps any, uh, in my opinion, different than just kind of your day-to-day traffic. I think you're looking in the morning at a really high traffic period because then you've got a multiple, you got people coming and going maybe from the neighborhoods. Um, frankly, if I lived there, I would avoid that completely. I would find my way all the way around. I don't even think I'd want to mess with it in the morning. Um, to, yeah. So anyways, I think we're, we're all in it. We want to make the right choices and decisions and it's, and it's taking some time. So I can imagine there's some frustration that's, that's building up from people that are, um, from the developers and whatnot that really want to move forward with this. And, um, so I, I mean, I guess from the next steps, I don't know, is it possible to go back to the planning board? Is it, is this really the right decision to make it go all the way through? It's not, I guess, the question that I can answer, but it certainly is the question that I can't get past that keeps looming in my head. Um, so.
Thank you. Um, I, I think to, to that point. Thank you. Um, I, I think to, to that point, um, there, there's an agenda item tomorrow evening for the planning board. Uh, I was wondering, Mr. Clinton, if you could talk about what you've heard tonight in terms of the dialogue. Um, I think everyone comes to the table, um, in good faith, trying to reconcile public safety, convenience, um, and expediting the process. Well, what's your, uh, take on, on the presentation of the planning board tomorrow night and what you're going to seek and, and how you'll go about that?
Well, first of all, thanks for having me and thanks for everybody to get together on this issue. Uh, before I answer that, I, I wanna share a few of my own thoughts, um, and then hopefully I can remember what the question was to begin with.
I'll remind you.
Um, obviously, from our standpoint, as we represent the developers as the design consultants, this has been a very, very long process, um, not only from the subdivision's standpoint, but this particular issue of paramount importance. Strictly from an engineering design standpoint, uh, I concur with virtually every comment that Kyle Fox has mentioned about the appropriateness of a curve design versus a roundabout. The roundabout simply from an engineering standpoint is not necessary. It's, uh, not warranted. Uh, it just can't be justified simply from a traffic, uh, design or study standpoint. He keyed on a few different, um, aspects when he was doing his analysis, safety. I personally believe whether it's the curve or the roundabout, that the safety difference is very negligible. Since the roundabout is more an overkill in design, if you will, it's overdesigned, it will certainly slow down and create a safe situation. But I don't believe that the curve is inherently dangerous at all, the way it's designed, with one stop sign as the school, uh, traffic exits the school itself. So, I believe both will be extremely safe. And I don't think there's a very, uh, I think there's a negligible, negligible difference. Function, as far as why is a roundabout considered, well, it can't come down to traffic because it's just not necessary. Uh, I understand Matt's concerns about traffic and perhaps wanting a study. But even Steve Keach, myself and Kyle Fox are all in unanimous agreement that a traffic study is not warranted. In analysis in our office, there's a manual called trip generation. Kyle would be familiar with this. Uh, a standard four-bedroom house, uh, is expected to create nine point five seven trip ends on average per, per house. A trip end is not just you went to the store and that's one. It's, you went to the store, you came back to the store. That's two trip ends. At seventy-one homes, if you round that number up to ten trip ends per day, that's only seven hun- seven hundred and ten trips. If all of the homes took all of their trips through Madeline Bennett, that's only seven hundred and ten total on any given day. The requirement for a roundabout from a traffic standpoint is easily in the ten thousand.
Isn't that just the net addition, however, of the new homes, not, not the full traffic through that intersection?
And then you're talking about the traffic for the school buses, parents and staff going through there, as well as various people coming from the rest of Old Blood and perhaps to some extent, on occasion, through Wilson Hill Road. From my analysis, Kyle Fox and Steve Keach, a traffic study is just not warranted. If one was to be done and it showed that a roundabout is not needed, would it be the board's position that a roundabout is not needed and therefore it would be the curve? That's an open question. Obviously, I don't expect an answer, but we know what the answer's gonna be in a traffic study. It's not going to warrant a roundabout. So that's the only reason to do a traffic study. Thirdly, as far as maintenance goes or, or suitability from a standpoint of fire trucks, et cetera. Well, I can agree that from a maintenance standpoint, yes, it is more difficult to maintain the roundabout. There's no question about that. Um, do larger vehicles like a ladder truck have difficulty coming around a roundabout? Well, certainly if it's a smaller size, and that's why they have the, the aprons in the middle that you can drive across. Uh, and I don't feel that a roundabout that's not necessary from a traffic standpoint needs to be any larger than the footprint of the cul-de-sac is now, which is virtually the same size as the, as the roundabout that exists in Goffstown at the one fourteen Mass Road intersection, which incidentally had to be approved by the state too, since that's also Route one fourteen. And as many of you may know, there's a school, the high school, Goffstown High School is right around the corner from that roundabout. So it's actually fairly appropriate to use as a comparison. So from our standpoint, uh, we've had a very long process, you know, from this issue alone. This was back in May when we first had our Highway Safety Committee meeting, the first one. We had certainly hoped to reach a consensus. Uh, we, we were very ardent supporters of the curve design to begin with because it is the proper design for this. However, given the nature of the disagreement from the school board and the SAU, we certainly were willing to go back and say, wh- you know, is there a reason to reconsider this? And go against, quite frankly, the vote of the Highway Safety Committee and the directions and, and advice of some of the town staff. And we felt in the end, quite frankly, it was more expedient to go with the roundabout to acquiesce to the desires of the school board and the SAU on this. Because we somewhat felt that while it's overkill, it's overdesigned, well, that's in a positive direction. We're not asking to under-design it and do something that we felt wasn't proper. It was an overdesign. So we felt that was something that hopefully the, you know, we expected the town might say, well, it's really not needed, but okay. Maybe that was our mistake in expecting that that could be the outcome. So we've gone through this process and now I'm hearing and I'm sensing, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is that we might be another week, two weeks, a month, two months from coming to some decision here. And ultimately, I understand the decision rests with the planning board and we do indeed have, I guess I remembered your question. We do have, uh, a meeting scheduled tomorrow evening to, to discuss this matter. It's the paramount issue for us to move forward. Quite frankly, the rest of the subdivision is very simplistic as far as its design. Uh, and it relatively has no issues. This is the item to get through. And if we can't get through this tonight or have some clear direction that's tangible for us, we're almost at no other choice but to ask the planning board to direct us what to do. Uh, and that's why we're on the agenda tomorrow at this point is to say, I mean, I guess I've been called a ping pong ball or in the middle of, fatted around, and it's somewhat true. Uh, but this is what we do in trying to work through problems and try to reach a consensus or an agreement or give a, get a direction. Tomorrow night might be that point. If, if there's no clear direction that all of us in this room can say, we're really close, if we just had one or two more days or a week and everybody would agree to this, well, I'd say, fine, we can table and work towards that. But if we're not there, I'm afraid we have to go to the planning board tomorrow night and say, uh, there's no consensus. There's an impasse. What would you like us to do? 'Cause quite frankly, we're happy with the curve. It's appropriate. We're willing to do the roundabout. So that's where we are.
Excellent. Uh, Vice Chair Barnes.
Um, and maybe I missed asking the right question earlier. Uh, why is the stop sign at Old Blood Road versus Merrimack Middle School?
There, in, any of, none of our concepts show a stop sign at the Old Blood Road. The only stop sign is at the middle school.
Oh, I understand that, but why not? Because that way we would have the right to get out when we have our peak traffic times. And people coming out of the development would just stop at the end of their development, which happens all the time on most of our roads.
Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that our discussion was because Madeline, or where Madeline Bennett, if you're looking at the curve design, the piece that you can see up there in the bottom left-hand corner, is the road. And that's Madeline Bennett. Whereas the access to the school is just that, a driveway. Normally, you don't put a stop sign on a through road and allow the, uh, the right-of-way, the traffic right-of-way from a driveway onto a main road. Do you follow what I'm saying?
I do, except for the fact that I, I don't wanna look at this as a driveway.
Exactly. I think that's, and I think you hit it right on the head, was just that statement there. I think a lot of folks over the last, since its design, have thought that that's a straight-through shot.
I do. Every day I drive it.
That it's a road. And I think the, the hard thing to get your, everybody's arms around is the fact that it's, it's not. It's, Madeline Bennett in its design and concept here is gonna continue sweeping by. And the driveway access to the middle school's gonna be on your right. And it makes much more sense when you look at a main road, not to stop the traffic on the throughway, whereas opposed to if you're thinking about a driveway or access road, just like as if it were a Shaw's. And I'm certainly not drawing the parallel that this middle school is like a Shaw's at all. Just saying that from an ingress and ingress perspective, that's how you design the roadway. And that's why the design came to us with that stop sign there at the exit from the middle school onto Madeline Bennett.
So, and I guess, you know, I know what you're talking about, the rule, but I have to, I have to question why we're not questioning the exceptions.
Yeah, if I can just, uh, the, we've all collectively sat around and, and we've talked about this ad infinitum. And you've heard, I look at the round the room and I consider us, and Ken has said, we're all experts. And we are. We all have the best interests at heart. And I think if that's the case, in all seriousness, it behooves us to do that study, whether it's justified, not justified, whether we agree or not agree. That way, when it goes to the planning board, and even if they comes up with, they can't even make a decision when the study is done, then it's in the planning board's lap, but they have all of this data and all of this opinion in front of them. And then they can make an educated decision, 'cause that's what they're there to do. It's time to make that decision then. My own opinion.
Thank you.
I think what, uh, the chief suggests, uh, makes good sense. And I, I appreciate from, uh, I said it before and I'll say it again, I can appreciate from the developer, developers' perspective, the team associated with the develop- developer, um, that this must be frustrating. Um, to, uh, have spent this much time and, as you said, tried to find, uh, a solution that would work for us, but then assume it would be acceptable, um, for all the other parties, only to find out that it, it wouldn't be. Um, I think what the chief says is let the data tell us what it ought to be. Um, and if the conclusion is that, um, a roundabout is in fact over-engineering, that the, uh, sweeping curve is the right solution and that we need to, as a town, fund, uh, crossing guard during those peak hours to ensure the traffic flow coming out. Whatever that is, um, let's put it in front of them. Because I think the challenge that we've had is, um, early on in the process, there wasn't one planned design that was done incorporating all of the feedback. Uh, I recall the planning board meeting of last February, uh, that Chairman Best said on a number of occasions, you need to involve the school district. Um, has the school district been involved? No, you need to involve them. Um, if we had, uh, gotten involved sooner, I think, uh, and together, uh, we'd have one plan, not two plans. And, um, we probably wouldn't be at this point. Uh, but I think, all things considered, um, I, I think that's the most informative way. And I think that, you know, the, the school board with amendments could, could find a way to, to, um, deal with what, you know, what came out of that process. But would feel much more comfortable having the data tell us that in fact that's the case, even though there's certainty amongst certain people, uh, that it's not warranted. Does that make sense?
I think what I'll...
Yeah.
Evening Attorney Greg Michael. I've probably been associated with this project longer than anybody in the room. I don't know if that's fortunate or unfortunate, but that's a fact of what I do on occasion. Um, I've been listening very, very attentively to this. I wanna point out a couple of things. We've done our best to try and work with the various groups. And we don't usually have combined meetings of the school board and the traffic people and so forth, which is why this appears now, in retrospect, in retrospect, to be somewhat bifurcated. Because we don't have joint meetings with you people. This is the first time, I think, I've been to the school board to discuss a planning issue in thirty years. So it doesn't come up very often. So I agree with the chief, this definitely falls into that, kind of that one percent category of where we're not maybe all on the same page. But in defense of us, we've done our best to meet with you folks, with Matt, with these folks, the planning board. I mean, we've done our level best to try and accumulate relevant information to come up with the conclusions and plans that we drafted. I would point out that the curve plan is not the only plan that was submitted to the traffic people. Ken did about eight plans. That was the plan that kind of everybody focused on. But to suggest that we gave a kind of give it or leave it on that plan is not true. It's not true at all. It may be the plan that everybody focused on at the end of the day. The concern I'm hearing here is do we have a consensus? Now, do we get, get back to the planning board and let them try to ferret this out, which may not be in the best interests of you folks? Or the town folks, I guess that's the way I'll put it. And, um, we're prepared to do a couple of things for you, assuming, assuming we can get this done. You're right, we are a bit frustrated and rightly so. But having said that, I don't want frustration to get in the way of, as one of the, a couple of the members have pointed out, doing the right thing. I don't wanna let frustration be the key player in how this board operates, or quite frankly, the town for that matter, or the planning board. We'd be prepared to get someone like Steve, I know Steve Purnow very well, I've worked with him over the years, to take a look at this, to maybe give that third outside perspective on the various plans that we're talking about and how they might work. I guess the thing I've got to ask is assuming we do that, do you folks get back together and, how do I put this politely? Reach some resolution or at least attempt to? I recognize Steve can come up with a report and you folks are still at loggerheads. At that point, we're going to the planning board. We're going to the planning board. We're gonna let them decide. Maybe they have us put the gate back up. That was a planning board decision to run the through road.
How long, how long ago was that decision made?
Uh, at least two years.
Okay.
And I was at the meeting, in fact, I scheduled a special meeting with the planning board because I did not want us designing this if they were going to say, no, put a gate in. Made no sense. I think we can all agree on that. Made no sense. The planning board, uh, believed that it was best because of the distance of Madeline Bennett to provide other access for the school. They felt it was better to make the interconnect overall for safety purposes. And they directed us to pursue the interconnected roadway. They made that decision. Because I asked that, because I didn't wanna be, again, spending a lot of money designing something that wasn't needed. So we did do that with the board. But again, like everything else, plans change, thought processes change. We've done a lot of work with these various plans. I can't predict what they might or might not want at this time. But that certainly was the direction that they pointed us in. So my suggestion is, is that we get a study done, we get it back to all of you, all of you, at the same time. So we're not dealing with the who got what first. And I guess I would ask that you folks get back together very quickly. I don't mean to put pressure on anybody. Get back very quickly and see if there can be, can be some consensus. Alternatively, Matt has been very gracious, very gracious, very helpful. And we could also round up he and one or two of these folks with Ken, look at the report and maybe reach a consensus for submission to you folks. That would save us a lot of...
I think that would save a lot of time.
Save us a lot of time and expense and effort. But I think that was working. Uh, we did, we're working with Matt and with Steve Ke- Keach on behalf of the school district. And, you know, we were doing our best to work through that, as you all know. So maybe we meet with a few people and if Chief Doyle wants to be there, bless him, he can be invited to the meeting.
You realize, we've already pulled him from the department's holiday party this evening, so.
Well, too bad. Tears are falling from my eyes and I'll apologize later. I didn't set the meeting up, Chief. But anyway.
Attorney Michael, how, how quickly do you think that could be turned around?
I'd like to, I'd like to get to someone and get it done in a couple of weeks. That's how quickly. And then I'd like to get together with Matt and a couple of these folks. Kyle's been helpful. Again, I, I, I respect the differences. I'm gonna make that clear.
Yeah.
I do. But we're sitting here going, yeah, we are the ping pong ball.
Yeah.
But I respect the differences.
And, and just, just so you know, I, I, I don't think we're, we, from our perspective, we're not trying to...
I know you're not.
...be difficult.
You, 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 folks have actually been very gracious and, and, and I...
And I think the reason you typically don't deal with cross-board, uh, issues is that, you know, it's not often you're intersecting with a school-owned road necessarily, right? So...
I, I, I hear you. I hear you.
Yeah, so, uh, we have our next scheduled meeting on January fifth. So, um, and then after that, we meet, uh, actually on the twentieth. Um, so conceivably, uh, depending upon how quickly you can turn that around, we might be able to add it to the agenda. can turn that around, we might be able to add it to the agenda for the 5th.
Well, I'd like to have it added in terms of a recommendation from...
Right, from the combined group.
So when, you, I, at this point, the board's got to be intimately acquainted with us, first couple of meetings, everybody was getting up to speed, but I think we're all on the same page.
Yeah.
And I'd like to respect the fact that if Matt and Kyle and others can come to some resolution, that that could be submitted, and you people could say, yeah, that, that should work, and we move on, that would be my hope.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Matt, you had something?
Yeah, I totally agree with Attorney Michael, and I respect him for offering that up, and the, obviously, he's conferred with the developer and the owner of the property, so I respect them too, this has nothing to do with the intersection, it's just something that I don't want to see you get caught up in, is the easement document, I know this hasn't been presented to DES yet, and I know the warning of the easement, and I believe you have a copy of it also.
I do.
And, you know, the easement talks to a minor encroachment onto the easement area, and the road looks like it's more than a minor encroachment, and I know why you want to do that, so you can get gravity soared to the manhole cover that sits in the center of the, the circle right now, because if you had to follow the, the path along old blood, it, it doesn't work, because I believe the invert is like eight feet down at that point, so if there's a way to, I'd hate to go through all this traffic study, we, we kind of agree on everything, we're all happy, we break open the bottle of champagne, and then DES says, no, you've got to shift that road over twenty feet, and that changes the complexion of everything, or is that something we can bounce back from?
I think, I think we can work through that, I'd like to get a design scheme in place that we're working with, to try and address the safety issues, those are the paramount issues that I'm hearing from both, both sides tonight, so to speak.
Right.
And we'll work with, I think we can work through the rest of it fairly easily, that'd be my, my guess.
Wonderful, so, we will look to here then, on the study, the smaller group will get together for a recommendation.
It's my hope.
At this plan, we, at this point, we will plan to have an agenda item for our January 5th meeting, to move things forward.
And hopefully it can just be a summary of things, so we can get it done.
Yes, that's my intent as well.
Thank you.
That the group will work it out at what we would call the committee level.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, I very, very much appreciate your time, your expert testimony, and our continued partnership, and to the developers' team, again, our apologies for the delays, and we're working to expedite as quickly as we can.
Thank you, and you have not been really a delay issue, you've been trying to work through this with us, and we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I have to find my place again. That takes us to item number six, formal hearing on food service budget for 2014, 2015, Director of Food Service, David Zeki. Mr. Zeki, thank you very much for hanging in there to this late hour.
Welcome.
He thought we had opinions about food service, you should see us talk about roundabouts.
Well, thank you very much for letting me present my budget tonight. This is the budget proposal for 2015, 2016, for the Food Service Department. The funds requested in this budget reflect the costs associated with operating the six schools within the district, and the one significant item that I have in this budget is purchase of replacement equipment for the Master Cola Upper Elementary School. It would be one of the steam tables that we need to replace, which keeps a consistent temperature for the food. We did replace one of the other ones this year, and another one for the Master Cola Elementary School, which has worked out very well, so. I would also like to say that the Merrimack School Lunch Program is a member of the New Hampshire Buying Group, we joined the buying group last year, which helps with bid pricing for grocery items. It does, it does give us considerate cost savings, we still do have to bid out bread, milk, and fresh produce, so those items still are separate from the buying group. There was a few questions that were asked from the, from the board, and if you'd like, you want me to read through those?
Yeah, that would be wonderful, if you could address those.
Yeah. First of all, from Christopher Ortega, one of them was involving food costs, and it says, "The paragraph discusses increased costs of products due to selection of whole-grain foods, fresh fruits and vegetables, however, the costs for this line item have been trending down. We are achieving cost savings associated with the participation of the purchasing collaborative, but it leaves the question, is all of the downward trend associated with these purchasing savings, or is it also reduced demand, and if, if so, how much, and is it due to declining enrollments, offerings, prices, and others?" Basically, yes, some of the cost savings is from the, the purchasing collaborative, we, I'd say we, we save maybe fifty thousand dollars a year collectively. Some of the other trending downward is a drop in participation, and that is some, somewhat due to a decrease of enrollment, and a little bit maybe could be, we did, there is some new regulations with the, with the school lunch program, as you all know, I don't think a lot of it is reduction in the amount of lunches that are purchased, but there is some, some change and some shift in the amount of snacks that we do purchase because of the smart snacks rules that's been put into place this year, so we don't offer as many selections, especially at the high school. The elementary schools and the middle school still have a, the same, approximately same number of snacks that they do offer, so, it's, you're welcome. And then from Andy Schneider, actually Sharon, Shannon Barnes, I'm sorry, you were next. Food service, all budgetary items seem to be in order, the line of questioning is about the school lunch program and the increased federal guidelines surrounding the quality of ingredients required. How much of an increase in cost of food supplies over prior standards are we experiencing, and what options do we have to opt out? If we opt out, what are the consequences, and if we do not opt out, what are the benefits, both nutritional and monetary funding? First of all, to address federal guidelines and the quality of ingredients, the purpose of the federal guidelines was to, you know, provide nutritional foods to the students, to try to combat the childhood obesity, so it's all in good intention. With the reauthorization of 2010, there was many different things that were, were scheduled for the five years, and each year, they've come up with, with a different step, maybe a different phase, we've finally culminated to the final stage, which I think has, has really put a damper on a lot of the lunch programs across the country. The introduction of 100% using whole-grain items, and the reduction in sodium levels, has caused some of the lunches, lunches to not be as favorable to the students, and some of it is, the manufacturers have altered some of the production of some of the, the items that the students were really in, in love with, so it may be a little bit of a tweak of a, of a flavor or, or preference to what the student tastes are. The whole grains, we had to go with 100% whole grains for all items, including croutons and saltines, and all bread, all, all sub-rolls, hot dog rolls, English muffins, so I think they kind of went a little bit overboard on some of these items, and it, it has caused maybe some of the students not to buy as mu, as much as they have been. The Congress has just taken a step to take a look at this, and possibly do a little bit of relief for these schools, and next year's a 2015 reauthorization, so this could be the, the year that they can take a look at it and see if it really was constructive as to what they intended to do, and hopefully, they can change some of the things that quite don't work for us, so. And as far as, as opting out, okay, there's been discussion with other schools that you would be able to opt out of the lunch program, and you'd be able to serve whatever, whatever you wanted to do. It, it sounds like a great idea, business-wise, because then you could, you know, produce different things that aren't, aren't under the, the hour, the spyglass that the government's looking at you, but if you opted out of the lunch program, you would probably lose your federal funding for free and reduced students, so the meals that we produce for free and reduced students, we would lose the funding for, we would lose the surplus commodity foods that we receive once a month, which are considerable savings to us every, every month. I receive about seventy thousand dollars in federal foods each year through the distribution, and those are items such as hamburgers, ground beef, turkey roasts, deli turkey, ham, cheese, a number of canned fruits and vegetables, and also fresh fruit and produce, so those items are very helpful to keep us, you know, on an operational basis, excuse me. And then from Andy Schneider, again, no real questions, except that the, the revenue flow and how the healthy lunch snack initiatives have an impact. Andy, pretty much the same, same thing goes. The healthy lunch snack initiatives, again, have had an impact, I think, just like anything else, the, the first time you changed something, when we first changed from regular chips to baked chips, I said, we're not going to sell a bag, right? But as, as the tastes evolve, I think I prefer baked chips because they're not as greasy, so, and they're a little bit better for you, you know, and it, it takes a little bit of time to, to adjust. If Congress can make some of these changes and, and help, you know, tweak these things a little bit, I think it's going to be better next year, and then we can all learn and move on with that, so I think it'll be, I think it'll be okay. So, at this point, some districts have opted, you know, to, to leave the lunch program, but I've, I've heard that it's only on a temporary basis, so it's, it's kind of like a trial basis, and they, they may rejoin again in the spring if things aren't working the way they think it's going to be, so, that's my opinion. All right, and do you have any questions on the budget?
Thank you for your presentation and addressing the questions that were submitted in advance, are, are there any other questions from the board on food service? Mr. Powell?
I apologize for not getting my question, my act together and getting the questions ahead of time, I had a crazy week. I just have a quick question on the technology service contract.
Sure.
Which is on page five, the budget's consist, the budgeted amount is consistent at twelve and a half thousand dollars.
Yep.
But it looks like it was not used so much.
Okay, I have a great...
Why do we still need to...
Great answer for you.
Perfect.
The, we kind of, we kind of switched gears, we were with Systems Technology for years, and Heartland Solutions bought out Systems Technology, as well as a number of other software development companies. So, when we, we also did a hardware purchase a couple of years back, so part of that, that reduction is because when we purchased the hardware, it was a warranty for three years, so we didn't have to pay anything for that, it was included in the purchase of the hardware. So for those, until 2016, we don't have to have any expenditure for, for that portion, we still have a software contract that we do deal with, and I did get a bid from Heartland for the 2015, 16 year, which is approximately sixty-six hundred, and we still have a, an ongoing contract with STG for the hardware. It basically would be about eleven thousand dollars, and I think I budgeted for twelve, five, so it, it leaves me a little bit of a leeway for that.
So if I understand you correctly, basically, we've been getting the servers for free because of that warranty?
Yeah.
And once it runs out, we're expected to...
It'll be, it'll be right back online.
We'll have, okay, got it, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on food service? No, thank, thank you for, again, for staying this late and for your...
Well, it was very educational.
...presentation, I'm glad, glad we could help. Glad we could help.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
That takes us now to item number seven on tonight's agenda, formal hearing on the maintenance budget, including a discussion regarding Merrimack High School's track replacement. I'll invite to the table our Director of Maintenance, Mr. Tom Tussow. Good evening, Mr. Tussow.
Good evening.
Thank you for staying so late.
Thank you.
I'd like to start off talking about my budget, and running it in this type of manner. First, I'm going to touch on four, four issues that are in my budget, then I'd like to go to the questions asked by the board, and if it would be possible, after that, go through the budget cut list, and then talk about the track, and then return to my budget for any questions that you have, is that acceptable?
Wonderful, I'll see you sometime tomorrow.
Okay. Well, I'd like to start off the four issues I'd like to talk about, which are significant about my, the budget this year, would start off would be the roof at the high school, it would be section A and section B in your map. Section A is over the high school cafeteria, section B would be over the gym area, the locker room area, exercise room area. It's approximately thirty-six thousand square feet, approximate price of eight-hundred-and-fifty-six thousand dollars would be one major issue in the budget. The other, next issue would be the HVAC replacement for five-hundred thousand dollars, that would be the heating and ventilation unit for the cafeteria and the kitchen at the high school. Another item in the budget to highlight is the 2003 replacement truck for the maintenance department, which is one of our plow trucks, we have four plow vehicles, three pickup trucks, and the last item I'd like to highlight would be the cost that you're seeing this budget for the gas conversion, excuse me. Starting off with the questions that were given to me in advance, I'd like to talk a little bit about the truck, this first thing up on the agenda, I'd like to thank you for last year's truck, it was very timely, one of the questions to me was, did we purchase the truck yet? And that was purchased as soon as we could, actually in July, probably the third week of July, because of last year in, let's see, March, it was, the current truck was taken off the road, and it did not make the rest of the year, it didn't pass inspection, so for a period of time, we were down. Unfortunately, I think we're kind of beaten the same... Unfortunately, I think we're kind of beating the same predicament this year. The truck that I, we're asking for is in similar condition. I'm going to tell you, unfortunately, I've spent roughly four thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars in the last two and a half years repairing this truck. It is definitely on its last legs. We do have two older vehicles in our fleet. We have two vans that are 2001, but they're both in better condition than the plow truck that we have. That, that's an important piece of plowing and making sure that we're able to open schools on time for us. I did want to kind of backtrack and mention one thing about the vehicle last year and how we go about making sure that we get a good price for our vehicles. I did go out and try to take a number of bids and trying to get out there and see what I could get for pricing. At the end of the day, it came back to state pricing. It ended up being the best price and the best deal for the district, and that's the contract that we signed. So we did buy it through the state purchasing plan, which ended up being our best, best I was wondering if anybody on the board would have any questions about trucks, the truck or anything about that that I could help them with?
Does anybody have questions? Mr. Schneider?
So it sounds like these trucks have a lifespan of about ten years or so?
I would say that's correct.
Right, so, and so the ones that we have remaining are 2008s. We have two, after the replacement, you'll have two 2015s or so, maybe a 16. The one that you bought last year, and if the budget goes through, the one for you by this summer. The other two are 2008s. You figure, you know, about four years, you'll be coming back wanting to replace those two. Is it, that, the lifespan, is that the methodology?
I don't think there is a, a true thought. Normally, we wait until the last minute before we put, put them in our budgets. I really, actually, if I'm looking at us long-term, I foresee a van coming next, probably next year, a 2001 van, which would make that probably a fifteen-year cycle on a van. So I would probably expect to see a van coming up next year in our cycle, if this truck makes it through.
Okay, because I mean, my original thought was is, you know, we, we buy new vehicles on a cadence basis, but because you're sort of rotating through vans, fifteen years, trucks, it probably doesn't make any sense to do anything other than buy, because leasing would just be this, I mean, leasing potentially could mean you have something newer more frequently and maybe less repair. I mean, have you ever done an analysis whether-
I've not.
-ongoing leasing? That's it.
Okay, Mr. Powell?
Okay, so if I heard you right, you've spent a little over four thousand dollars in repairs on this 2003 truck in the past couple of years, is that correct?
Correct.
And the truck only has forty-nine thousand miles on it. I understand it's a plow truck. Why is it in such disrepair? What, what is going on? Why are the vans holding up better?
Well, the vans don't plow.
Okay.
I guess that's, that's one of our big issues.
So let me, let me rephrase the question. What are, what are the types of repairs that are having to be done?
On, let's see. Power steering, exhaust manifold, ax- axle shaft, ball joint, the brake pads, rotators, sway bar, some of the repairs that we've done to this vehicle.
In your opinion, do you feel that these are from, how can I politely put this? Misuse of the vehicle or strictly from the fact that it's, you know, used primarily as a plow vehicle?
Primarily as a plow vehicle. Also, a lot of mileage, and I can't say a lot, but some mileage, when you're plowing, you're driving in reverse, you're backing up a lot. So there's actually more miles on these vehicles than they, they actually show. Although, I wouldn't say that there's a lot of miles, and that really doesn't drive any of our decisions about how long a vehicle is useful for us. Basically, all the miles we drive are hard miles. It's not like they get on a highway, they drive, they might drive a quarter of a mile at a time, and it's very tough miles that we'll receive. I don't think I've ever seen a school vehicle that I would say has a lot of miles on it.
I, I understand the nature of using it as a plow vehicle, and it's going to be rough on it, that's just the nature of the, of the business, if you will. I just want to make sure that our staff is not just, oh, it's just a plow vehicle and not using it appropriately, being rougher on it than what they normally would be. That's, that's what I'm trying to get at. The, the nature of the, of the repairs that you described, I, you know, the axle, the power, you know, all of that, I understand that it, that it's indicative of, of it being used as a plow truck. I just, I wanted to reassure myself that, you know, the employees are just not caring that, you know, that it's a work truck and, and aren't treating it as if they were, is their own, is what I'm trying to get at.
Well, one of the things we try to do is each vehicle is assigned to one person. So that person does definitely have a connection to their truck.
Okay.
Meaning that it's just not fifteen different people piling in a truck and we don't care. It's, they know that that's the truck they're going to be driving is, if they're here eight years, they're going to be in that truck eight years. It, it's a long-term relationship.
That's the answer I wanted to hear, thank you very much.
All set? Ms. Gualyumi?
And then when we purchase a new truck, how does it work? Do we trade in the old one? What, how does that, do we get revenue back for, or do we get some-
On the last, on the last vehicle was scrapped.
Okay, so we're really driving them into the ground, literally?
We're probably going to be in that boat again.
Okay.
Did, did not pass inspection, so was off, off the, taken off the road.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, are we all set on vehicles? All right.
The next area I'd like to touch on is there was a question about master agreement, and there could be some confusion where somebody might think that Honeywell or our agreement is in the budget twice. Once, on page five, there is a mechanical agreement that we pay three hundred thirteen thousand, five hundred twenty-nine dollars, and that just does show a three percent increase. But that's what that is, is it's the maintenance end of the heating and ventilation unit. So if we have a room that is not warm or is not cold, we will call them, they will come. If there's, they do maintenance as far as these equipments, belts, they replace motors, that's under a contract, making sure all the computer automation is up to date, working correctly. Anything that they need to do on a regular basis to make sure that all of our schools are running at efficient rates, running reports, making sure we're, we're where we're supposed to be, is what's covered under that heading. There's also a heading under retrofit project, which is on page seven, that shows a three point five percent increase, and that's basically just to pay for the retrofit that I believe was in 2007. That will go through until 2020, I believe that's when it ends. And those are two differences, why you might see two different entries for something that looks similar in our budget. And I'm just wondering if anybody had any more questions on that?
I don't see any. That was mine, so I'm good.
Moving to the third. On page 12, under electrical superintendents, there was a typo made. The old number was, well, the number that should not have been there was four thousand six hundred nineteen dollars. The actual number was three thousand four eighteen. And that would bring that in line when we talk about earlier, the percentage that we've changed.
Does that mean we've now taken twelve hundred off the bottom line of the budget or simply a page in this book?
Off the bottom line of the, yeah, off the bottom line of the budget. We're giving you your first cut.
The thousand-mile journey begins with the first step.
Yes.
Okay.
Also, you see in the utilities, we did mark the utilities at the end. If it says OL, it stands for oil, NG, natural gas, P for protein, P for propane. And the reason why is when we look back in two or three years from now, we're going to be wondering, why, why is it so different? And that'll give us an indication there.
Mr. Schneider?
Just raising my hand for somebody. So in that vein, I think I had a question saying, what you've done has shown the, you know, if you look at something that's now natural gas that used to be oil, you show like zeros for oil in the previous ones and what, you know, and, and for example, on page 12, at the very top, you say maintenance utility gas, MHS. You, you say oil for the 13, 14 expended, budgeted in 14, 15, because it was oil back then, but you don't have any numbers next to it, because one of the things we like to do, at least I like to do, is look at where we've come in the past and what it is in the future. One of the, the things that we preached about was we were going to say big bucks by going from oil to natural gas, so it might be good to have what the old budgeted figures were under oil and what your current budget is, so we can sort of get a glance as to what the savings we might see or what the trending is.
You know what, Andy, just in, in terms of that, it's just something that, that I had done. In looking at the consolidated budget, in particular, I think by object, I think calls that out a little bit better because it aggregates all the like expenses, and you can actually see that, it's roughly a couple hundred grand reduction in that section. I, I know in the book, for the maintenance department, it's somewhat less clear, but I think if you look at budget by object, it stands out a little bit more.
It's a little confusing because it, it says OL, but it says zero next to it, and you expect to say, whoa, what was it for OL? But yet it's under the heading for natural gas, so it's like you'd have to go back. So just, I mean, as, as we go through these, I mean, it's going to straighten out over a couple of years anyway, but it's just a little harder to find.
The last question that I think I received was which or any possible large items could wait, which is probably a big thing now we're down to budget time. My priority on my list for me is definitely the roof. I think the roofs at this point need to move forward. I think that if we're looking at the HVAC unit at the high school, its time has come. It's, it would be my best option if I was looking to save money. That would be where I would take the, the thought of cutting if we need to cut there and making the tough decision. The, the track issue is another issue, and I think we could probably go into talking about that a little later at time. But that would be, out of three, I would see that would be probably the best alternative that we had if we were looking at one of those major issues. The heat wheel. The heat wheel would be the best.
Oh, okay, I misunderstood you.
Can I just clarify that?
Please.
So the notion would be that the roof would be replaced, the sections that he's highlighted, and the heat wheel that's there would stay there for one year, operate one year, we come back another year and ask for the heat wheel or the HVAC unit to be replaced.
Put it on the set. Let's see, Ms. Gualyumi?
So if we did go that route, what would the additional, would there be additional costs because you're not doing it all at the same time? If we're doing it in the multi-year steps? Just trying to understand what the repercussions would be if, if we did, I guess, kick the can on that and if ultimately, you know, it's an extra, I have no idea, X dollars to have people come back out, maybe take parts of the, I don't, I don't know what's involved in doing that, so hopefully that it makes sense.
It, it does, it does. I would, I would look on, look at it, it's, it's two separate projects. They're not connected anyway, although they are on the same roof. The roof and the HVAC, the, the unit has no connection as far as it just gets placed on the curb, or it can be picked up and done later, doesn't matter. So the HVAC unit can definitely be done at a different time. Is there going to be more cost? It's hard to look in that crystal ball and say, well, this project cost us a little bit more next year. I, I can't give you an answer to that. All I can assure you is there's no connection between the roof and the HVAC unit. They're both separate projects.
Okay, that, that was primarily the root of my question anyways, was are we kind of not do, if we do that separately, is it going to kind of create, I, maybe some foolish costs of not doing it all together?
All set? Who else had their hand up? Mr. Schneider?
So if I remember right, when we looked at the proposal for the replacement for the heat wheel, it was sort of a different design than Honeywell had proposed of using different technology.
Yeah.
If I remember right, and I don't have it in front of me, I apologize, the methodology was to have a different type of exchanger on the top, but also there was to cut two more vents in a different location than the current footprint. So I guess my question would be is, is there any negative to that part of the retrofit if we did it separate from the roof?
I don't believe so. I guess is my, my answer. Yes, we'd be cutting into a new roof, but this is something that people do, hopefully not all the time, but which is can be done in, in a safe manner. We would be using a roofing company, obviously, we'd have probably a cost of, there would probably be a little avoidance because, A, they wouldn't design the roof, or, or we could actually have them design the roof with those curves, knowing that we're going to be doing it. So maybe a little thought there that we can do some kind of pre-planning, probably a really good idea.
Right, because my thought was is that if there's, if we have to do it, is there anything incremental we would have to add? If we did it after the roof was there and retrofitting with a roofing company versus, I mean, you're right, if you planned ahead and you, and you had them do it, then you might not need a roofing company when you had the thing, because all the footprint would be in place. So that was my, because I knew that the design of the new one was a little different than what's currently there.
It could have been analogous to, let's say, when you're framing a house and you know a couple of years, you want a couple of skylights put in. You can have the framing job done for that and then just put the roof on regular, and then you know you have it already framed off, so.
So a little planning ahead will help, I think, on that.
That's a good idea.
Any other questions on this? Okay, moving on.
Okay, I'd like to go through the cut list of this year, and in the cut list, the first two items, we're talking about the countertops and the cabinets in room C121 that's at the high school. That is the family consumer science. I'm not sure if anybody's happened to see any, but they are in very poor condition. They are, especially the countertops are past their prime, at least, that's an easy statement to make. The cabinets are quite old, at the same point. There is some tie together, there is a little bit of long-term planning on that. That is one of the sections at the high school that we haven't done the abatement for yet, which next year, if it would all flow together, that would be an area that we would do an abatement, and at the same time, it seems like an excellent opportunity to upgrade that. We can give it a new look with cabinets and countertops. So that, that would be the long-term planning, why it wasn't asked for this year, but why we thought it would be good to delay it and talk about it for next year's project, possible.
Ms. Barnes?
I ask this all the time, so I'm going to ask it again. I noticed that countertops are thirteen thousand dollars. How many countertops is that?
Do you know, I haven't actually went out and measured. The teacher is actually went out and got a number of estimates. I've looked at the estimates, they seem pretty reasonable. What happens is when we put these lists together and we start talking about it, we get to the point where we're saying, we think this is the actual budget. Now, when Marge and the leadership team says to me, yeah, we're going to put it in my budget, then I start digging down.
Okay.
So, the dig-down process hasn't quite happened yet, but we're pretty comfortable with the figures that I have right now in front of me.
So, and I'm going to ask the same for the counter, the cabinets, you know, as long as the countertops. So, we're looking at what we should call residential standard materials or is there something different that's put in schools even though it's supposed to be family and consumer science?
I think we're looking at a fairly good quality. It's not like we would buy something that would be a particle board or something that would be a short N or a short solution. Most time, anytime we, at least myself envision anything for school, it's not like I'm going to be able to come back in five years and say, you know, it's just not the right shade. It doesn't work that way. So, whatever happens, whatever goes in there needs to stay in there for a while, needs to hold up, needs to give us good value.
So, you're skipping Ikea is what I'm hearing. Okay, no, that was really, because I know we've talked about furniture before and how you'd think of, you know, something you'd get in like a furniture store and it might be different for us because it's got to hold up to different abuse. So, that's kind of where I was going with it. So, thank you, that's good information.
Just for clarity purpose, I wanted to be clear. We mentioned the cut list, but we didn't explain what the cut list actually is. There are a number of items that did not make the proposed operating budget that were cut by administration, right? So, to your point, these were ideas, projects that could have been done, will need to be done, but did not even make it into the proposed budget. The maintenance department has more than a handful here totaling roughly $405,000. And then there's a staff position district-wide for a mental health professional for another $87,510. So, in total, just under half a million dollars worth of expenditures that did not make the proposed operating budget and that's what we're reviewing and talking about, the cut list. I'm sorry, so please continue.
Another item on that cut list is what happens, when we're putting these lists together, I gather every bit of information from anybody who can help me out and give us some direction. One of the items that we've been, I've been thinking about for another number of years and what came up to us is some of our windows in some of our schools, we've seen better days. They're just a little outdated, some don't lock as well as they should. And putting that list together, what came to mind is this windows in the E section of the high school, first and second floor. You see the figure of $140,000. That's roughly 56 plus windows. That would be to do the whole thing, top to bottom, I mean, remove it, replace it with a good quality window going back in there. As I said, some of them don't lock, we repair these constantly. I don't know if I should admit it, but there's probably greater than five windows on the inside of the building that we lock with a stick, meaning that there's actually a stick in there. And it serves a great purpose of locking the door. I do feel of locking the window, it is secure, it's just not very, I don't know, it's not the way it should be.
I'm sorry, so I actually have a question about that. Of those windows that need replacement, how many are issues of locking versus how many need replacement? In other words, from my perspective, and maybe this is flawed logic, but from my perspective, the issues with locked windows are of higher importance to me than perhaps a window that's frosting over or perhaps is letting out a little more heat than it should. So, do you have a sense of how many of the windows are, of what type of issue?
I'm going to say there's more than five and, but I've been told there's more than 10, but we're going to stay with more than five right now.
And what does that represent as a percentage of the 140,000?
Well, if you're looking at a total, there's roughly 56 windows that I'm talking about, so five out of 56.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Schneider.
Are these windows original equipment for that wing when it was put on back before the early seventies?
I have to believe it was not upgraded, yes. I would think.
So, these are the same slide windows that were there when I went to school back before they had electricity, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Fair enough, thanks.
Any other questions? All right, let's keep going.
Okay. CAF tables at Master Cola Elementary School. I don't know if you remember, a few years ago, we went through Reed's Ferry and Thornton's Ferry School. This will be our last elementary school to upgrade their tables. Those tables at that school, out of the three, were in the best conditions and now they also have reached probably the end of their term and we were thinking about replacing those as well.
Ms. Gualyumi.
How does the cost, I'm trying to refresh my memory of the, of these tables compared to what we paid within the last couple of years for the other sets? Are they comparable? Have they gone up significantly?
I would say they're in line.
Okay.
Superintendent.
I also want Tom to point out that we made a decision of two competing items, the cafeteria tables or the sink combination replacements that you would see in the budget, which I don't think you pointed out, Tom, but those, those were thought to be a more necessary need because those are in the classrooms where the students are and so we made the choice. And sometimes I think it's important to show that we've got two competing items in a school and so it's like which, which are we going to do in which year? And we made the decision to do the sink combinations, if you want to just highlight that, because that's.
The sink combinations is in this budget?
Right, but to point it out because it hadn't been mentioned. It's something, it's something different that's in your budget for $10,000 and I think it's, I forget what page it's on, but just to highlight that that was the decision made.
Vice Chair Barnes.
How does this delay impact the overall furniture replacement plan you have for that building?
Furniture delay, I don't think furniture is tied into.
Furniture, the cafeteria tables would not be a part of that, Shannon.
Maybe the next one would possibly?
No, when, when we do cafeteria tables that are in the wall, they, they are Tom's and so the furniture replacement that you're thinking about really has to do with the tables and chairs and bookcases and so on. So, it would be our intent to have the cafeteria tables, it's the last, if you will, wall unit to be done.
Okay.
And I mean, so it would just be a year out.
Okay, so I guess segueing to the next one, would that be part of the furniture replacement plan? I'll skip the question. The 300 and caddy that'll come up with next, is that part of the furniture replacement plan or is that part of a different?
That's part of a different too.
Okay, so make sure.
Yeah, it's part of Tom's budget because it has to do with events and so on. It's stored in the maintenance cabinet, it's looked at different than the classroom, so.
Fair enough, thank you.
And the sink base replacement is on page four and that would be $20,000 that, that's on that page for that line item.
Okay. Mr. Schneider.
So, the cafeteria tables in Master Cola, is it a safety issue today? Can we get by another year without them?
I think we can. I think we'll go back, we'll service them, we can get another year.
Because it's sort of like the logic behind the bleachers, I mean, you can repair them for a while and then it hits the point where cry uncle and stuff, but we're not at the uncle stage yet for.
I don't believe we are.
Okay.
Any other questions on the cafeteria tables? All right, let's move on.
Chairs, Thornton's Ferry. The chairs that we'd be using for setups, large gatherings, probably would be set up either in the gym or the APR room. They, that school has old metal chairs. There is enough money for 300 chairs and caddies that we would purchase the plastic ones, it would be a little lighter and they'll, they'd be a little bit, much more appropriate for school use at that level.
Any questions on the chairs? All right.
Then we go to sidewalk repair at the middle school, which I'm, I'm going to ask is if anybody's walked around the middle school, you could certainly see the deterioration probably by the salt and materials splashing up on the edge of the sidewalk. We have, in the last couple of years, replaced certain sections, some small sections of that. It seems to be happening at a greater rate than we would expect it to happen. So, I roughly had a, someone go up there and give me an estimate and quite honestly, I'm not so sure if the materials when it was poured was at the level it should have been, but I know at this point it needs to be repaired and I'm thinking that we probably should take measures and work for that next year.
Mr. Schneider.
So, first question is, are these concrete walkways today?
Correct.
And your presumption is that the materials used were, were notwithstanding to the elements of like salt and other things?
Long-term, we've had difficulty with the salt, probably the spray-up. The sidewalks in itself, we, we actually use ice melt and it doesn't affect the concrete. I'm not so sure if that happens all the time in a road since it's much more difficult, you wouldn't be able to buy ice melt on that level. So, some spray-up, some actual materials, it's wearing out a little quicker than I think they should since we have some that look perfectly fine and some not. It has certainly went past the window where we know that that school is greater than 10 years now. So, it's moving into the point where we probably should take some steps to repair it.
And I'm assuming that you would make sure that the material that you was, is used would last longer next time?
We would certainly do, we would look, we'd study that in making sure that we use the material that we think will last the longest in that. And I'm not satisfied with the 10 years, but sometimes it is what it is, but, and we move to address that.
I will say that when we, when we did the middle school, we hired Miller Engineering to make sure that, you know, the base was compacted to a certain degree and they would, I remember they would test the concrete when it would come in, like every other load, they'd, you know, say, okay, come over here and they'd put it in a box and they'd let it cure and then they'd, you know, test the strength in which it would break or something like that. And so, there was testing going on, but this could have been one of those batches that got by because for me, looking at it, it does look like it's prematurely feathered away, just slightly eroded, you know, and there is cement down there. It's just that the top layer, almost like a flagstone cracks. The top layer kind of cracked close to the curb.
And I would expect they did like a slump test on, on the material and probably checked the batch times to make sure that it was current enough to put it down. What happened on that day to certain pads, I don't know, but at this point, it does need to be addressed and probably around next year is its time.
Any other questions on the sidewalk? I'm up there quite a bit, was there actually this evening for the basketball game and where you can see the wear and tear is really closest to the seam by the curb and those corners, you know, that generally they're holding up fine, but as Tom's describing, that splash is probably eroding those sections.
That's why, I mean, is, my only question is, is that anybody that lives in New England knows that cement and salt don't mix really well. So, the question is, is that should we be looking at alternative material, you know, for the sidewalk or at least maybe the section close to the splash-up, you know? You know, I mean, tar, I mean, you know, there's a lot of sidewalks that are tar, but, you know, the, I think the thing is before you just, I'm sure that you will, when you look at the replacement, to make sure we don't have the issue of the splash-up that you're seeing, especially if it's on the edge or something like that.
Okay.
And I think this probably gets into the situation where we hit, hit the list and we hit the point where we're not digging into the situation, we're looking at it in general at this, at this point.
Yeah. All right, so that takes us to the boys locker room, HVAC.
Boys locker room has been a ongoing issue. We have taken, taken a number of steps this year, working with the contractor, mechanical contractor, bringing in more fresh air than, increasing the time that the unit cycles, trying to get it in a better place. I think if you would ask staff at the high school in the boys locker room area, they would agree that it has made some minor improvements. It's still probably a little bit away from where it should be. We actually, when you start these HVAC projects, you become comfortable or you become, you know that you got the right person and we've asked the gentleman to look at the locker room area the same time he looked at the CAF unit. And he mentioned to us that the problems in there probably exist because we were insufficient in bringing outside air and the current unit right now can bring in up to 50% outside air without freezing the unit. Maybe that, that's a formula that hasn't changed. Asked them for ideas and they came back with a budget number, again, of the 49,315 and that's how that was brought to us.
Mr. Powell.
What is the issue?
The issue is there's a strong odor, especially during sports seasons, in the boys locker room.
I assumed that's what it was, but I wanted to make sure there wasn't some underlying health issue that we needed.
Mr. Too, so you should know that there are two male educators shaking their heads behind you.
I wanted to make sure there wasn't an underlying health issue that needed to be addressed.
No, that area is nightly, we go through, we disinfect it. It's, the equipment is sent out on a somewhat regular basis to be cleaned. It is nothing more than I believe a lack of ventilation and this, could there be hygiene issues? It is an area that we've worked with administration, with the AD, and they have worked on it to try to correct it and improve some.
Okay.
Superintendent.
Important to point out, it's also a part of the NEAS report. So, in the 10th year, when they come back and do the review, the expectation is that one would have addressed it in some way or other. So, to Tom's point, we think that the person that we have looking at possible solutions might have the answer this time and he was the same gentleman that came before you and you know his seriousness of purpose. So, we're very hopeful that down the line, we'll have something to share with you, but we wanted to address before the next NEAS review. What, in the fifth year? I think we've got five.
Any other questions on the boys locker room? Okay. Next. Oh, there's the maintenance position.
I'm going to do mental health another night, so it's just your maintenance position.
Oh, Matt with mental health? Yeah, absolutely.
Tom, is your mic on?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
The maintenance direct, the maintenance position has been a long position that I've asked for every year since I've been director. It's directly related to, a lot of times, we have items that we can't get to or tasks that we can't perform just because we do not have enough work power, manpower to perform the task. Some of it is in grass cutting. You probably have maybe come across an issue where we don't get out to some of the schools as often as we needed to. Sometimes it's us being short or taking a little longer in processing work orders than we need to. It basically comes down to, the biggest need really started for us when we put on the middle school and we're still staffed the same way we are, were before the middle school went in operation. The first three, four years, five years. The first three, four years, five years, it was not a big deal, it was a brand new school. Right now, it's still, n- now it's becoming more of an issue and it's taking a sixth of our time because it's one-sixth of our school that we have to respond to. So it's always there. I didn't want to remove it because I feel that it is still is necessary. Although I do understand it's an ongoing issue.
Understood. Any questions? I think that was well stated. Okay, so that takes us through the cut list. Where, where are you taking us next?
Where, uh, to the budget, any place, uh, start at the front page and...
Okay. Does, do folks have any questions related to the maintenance budget? No, it looks as if you've addressed the maintenance budget question. So then, we said we would talk about the things that are not in that budget, right? Like the track?
The track. One of the questions I received about the track was what type of repair or do we feel that the track could be repaired and could it hold another year? After having conversations with the gentleman, uh, Brian Cornish that was before you, he feels that repairs next year could be made. And he gave an estimate that it would be an extensive repair, but would not be, in his opinion, probably more than $10,000. Which is a considerably large repair to a track, which would provide us with a safe cushion for when he left that day, that the track was safe. Although I do feel, and I always feel, that every day, the, any sports teams enter, whatever surface they were on, track, gym, uh, they need to make sure that before the event starts and with the athletic director, that we, we are providing them a safe, uh, inadequate facility. So their safety is very important to us. But he's pretty confident that we could, with $10,000, do a repair. So I guess, as far as the information about the track, that's an individual probably choice since you've all walked it or have seen it. One other question I did get, and I probably didn't get, answer it earlier, is I was asked, where is the repair for the track line in the budget? And that's under, um, the repair line for grounds repairs. So there is a line in the budget for that item. It would probably be a thought that if we decided not to do the track next year, that we might consider increasing that line item, which I have at one, zero, zero, two, six, three, four, zero, eight, four, three, two, oh, eight. On the grounds repairs, increase that line by $10,000. Yes, page ten.
So, Mr. Tussaud, you, you suggest increasing that by $10,000. At this point, the track isn't, isn't in the budget, right? It was held out because there are a couple of options, right, that need to be weighed, um, and assessed and, and, uh, it, it's for the board to, to put in. So how much of that maintenance line item is currently for track repair then?
We roughly spend, I mean, it, it changes each year, but if, if I had to put a number now, I would say that my average thought of spending for the track is somewhere between two and $3,000. Probably on the lower end of that. So with this extensive repair, this upcoming spring, probably adding $10,000 to that line would probably be the, the right number, that I would think.
Okay, I, I guess my point was, is if there was already 2,000 in there for track repair, generally speaking, then 8,000 would, might be an appropriate number to add to it.
I agree with you. My, my thought on that would be that we would probably end up having to do a second repair in the fall.
A full repair, yeah.
Yeah.
The major one.
That we wouldn't, uh, incur normally.
Good. Comments? Mr. Schneider.
So, a couple of questions. First of all, and I think I put this in my, my question thing is, when they do a repair, we look at, if you look at the repairs now, it's obviously patchwork when they get done because it's a different color. Is there a methodology that they use to, to help to blend colors in to repair? Like, is there any coating they can put on to help? Or will it always look like it's patches on a pair of jeans or something like that?
Patches.
Right, so it is what it is.
It is what it is. It'd be patches, it's, yes. Go back and respray to make it all uniform. I talked to Brian about that and he really thought that that would not be a good wa, good, good way of spending our money. Roughly, to come back and resurface, he's looking at, you know, he said $22,700 to redo the surface, which we couldn't do.
The whole thing or just the section that they patched?
To redo the whole thing.
Well, see, my, I guess my question was, is that when you look at a patched area, you've got a black track and the patched area is more of a gray color. Is there any way they can just sort of blend this particular area that it was repaired versus doing the whole track?
I have not asked that question. I do not know.
Okay, 'cause it, like, so, which sort of gets to earlier on, you, we asked you the order of things that you would potentially cut from the budget. And you said the thing that you would support, um, pushing off and the number one thing would be the, the, the heat wheel. That it was something that could last to the next year without much concern.
It's, it's, yes.
Right, and I think some of us at the table were saying, why would you put that over the track? It seems as though you have more concern about the track's viability. I mean, I, I guess I'd, I'd like to get your, your impression on why you would support the whole track replacement, um, over the heat wheel change.
The superintendent actually has something.
Well, I, I just think it's important because when we built the budget, we went off the capital improvement plan. In the capital improvement plan for next year, we were committed to doing the high school roof and the HVAC unit at the high school on the roof. And the track really still hadn't had its full day in court, according to us. I mean, we've talked and we brought the expert here, but we really felt that it still needed more discussion. And on the SIP, it's sitting a year out. So I think in our deliberation, when we've sat together, it was the notion that the roof replacement at the high school and the HVAC unit went together. It had gone through the SIP, it was blessed to do next year, so those two items went together. So if we look at what we, we cut within the budget, we're looking at the operating budget that we built.
Oh, so of all the things that are there, the cut would be the heat wheel because it could exist?
Of what we built, right. So in the operating budget, when you look at it as a whole, when we got to that 71 million or whatever, those two items are sitting there. So we say to Tom, of those two items that are there, which would you take out? I'm committed to the roof, I can do the HVAC unit a year out, and now tonight, and I can plan for it too. The track, I put it under possible warrants. It's an item that needs more discussion. You can do with it as you wish. You can put it in the operating, you can make it a warrant, you can do track repairs for another year. We didn't feel, when we put it together, that it had been vetted enough with and by you to make that decision. That's why, and tonight, I think, um, we've got a graphic for you to begin to look at too because persons want to know, what did the six lanes look like? I mean, a replacement of what we've got. And then the eight lane straightaway, that was something different. So Matt's got two to put up. This is the eight, and then we've got the other one. And we need to eventually be able to get you the graphic if possible, so you've got it for viewing. But it's kind of like to take a look at, what are we talking about? Because I think the other one has the retaining wall, right?
This is the six, and then this is the eight.
Can we stay on the six and just kind of talk it through and then move to the eight?
Do you want me to, uh, the, the sixth lane? The six, the sixth lane is just re-surfacing what is existing at this point. Addressing a couple of issues. One, the drainage issue all along, the long part of the track, the straightaway would be addressed. Also, the area where you enter between the two bleachers and the washdown, it's coming down over the track, would be addressed. And also at the end, if you're looking at it, as the board looks at it, on your left-hand side, the high, the side closest to the highway, we get a lot of washdown from that. And those two areas would be addressed as far as improving the way the land is sculptured and putting some kind of stairway in between the two bleachers so we can access it and not have the dirt roll over the track. Option two, which is the more expensive one, includes all of what option one does with a number of changes. One, you would add a retaining wall between the straightaway and the bleachers. And you would add two more lanes to the actual straightaway. So we would have eight lanes straightaway there. Which I guess when John Snell came, he talked about the benefits of that. And those are the basic option one, option two. One is 290 and one is 428.
So, the, and it may just be the, the level of detail in the diagram. The way it's drawn, that retaining wall looks as if it butts up right against the track. What's the offset of the retaining wall from the track in this?
I think that's just the way it's drawing. I don't think we have an exact distance. I know when talking to the AD, Eric, he was interested in having at least six feet from the bleachers away from the new, new fence being put up. So the retaining wall would be put at, and the fence would be put on top of it. So there'd be at least six feet, because he said, one thing he does notice is when the stands fill up on a few events, there is room so people can stand up front. And that was important to him. So that would certainly, I mean, it, it is a diagram with a lot of work that needs to be done about it.
Okay, are there any questions on the two proposed, uh, track designs? Mr. Powell?
I don't have any questions on the actual designs themselves. I guess I still need to, to be convinced, if you will, the need between the additional lanes. Because it is a, you know, a, a roughly a 30% increase in, in cost between the two. So I don't know if I personally have enough information to, to justify the additional expense yet. Obviously, that's not going to be a thing from a maintenance side for that.
Superintendent.
And I would just ask you, um, who, or what could we provide you to, to gain that information? Given the fact that we won't formally meet again until January? So during this time, we can amass what you need? If you know what that is. If you don't know what it is tonight, all I would ask you to do is to favor me with that information so we could try and seek it. If it means that we have John Snell come back, we would ask him to come back. If it's that, the track person from Maine, um, whomever.
No, it's, no, it's nothing about the, the actual track itself. I think, um, John or, or Eric or somebody on the athletic side of it to explain how is it, we've got through with six lanes all these years and now all of a sudden we need eight. I understand that they, uh, that, that the NCAA rules or, or, or stuff like that. But, um, you know, I, I, I guess I need to see actual numbers of how we're being impact, how our students would be impacted by the fact that we would only have six lanes versus eight lanes.
So I think that John could talk in terms of the students that participate, um, opportunities, competitions, um, and so on. He's, and he's got a complete history because he's been the track coach for such a long period of time. So I would think he might be the one to answer your questions.
And that would, that would be fine. Um, you know, I understand that his desire is to have more Class L meets here. Fine, we've already discussed it, financially, that doesn't benefit us. We don't get the gate. So, that, I just need something to justify it.
No, I, I will ask him to come.
Vice Chair Barnes.
I think other information that we could get would come directly from the NHI/AA, which would be, um, how they choose sites, um, what they're looking for, for infrastructure and facilities. I also look at this as a long-term benefit. When we're talking about adding something like a retaining wall, it's kind of comes back to the Keach-Nordstrom side probably. What that does for, um, long-term, you know, what would long-term maintenance of this look like? I look at an eight-lane track, you know, and that seems to be, from what we heard in our presentation, the trend going forward for state meets to be chosen for, uh, also it would be the perfect training ground for our athletes because they're training in an environment that they'll be competing at, at a state level to get championships. So I look at that as having, um, having direct benefit as well. But things like the retaining wall, what benefits that gives to us long-term as far as, you know, we know it's going to probably help with drainage, we know it's going to help with the structure of the land. But, you know, going forward, will we just have to do surfacing? Because the retaining wall will, will be in place. So it's a big ticket item, I think, but it's a one, a lot of it has some one-time costs involved, correct?
Right, the, the retaining wall is, will allow us to put in the two extra lanes. Without that wall, we don't get the two extra lanes. Do I anticipate any additional cost for that wall? Probably not.
So at that point, it's upkeep. So, you know, it's one of those, do you make an initial investment and, and then have just maintenance? Or do you make the short-term investment and then in 15 years, have the exact same conversation? And, you know, hopefully I'll be retired from this. But, uh, honestly, you know, are we just literally short, short-sighting the programs? And, and, uh, and the athletic department with, with our potential, what we can do? And, you know, above and beyond all, you know, I look at this, and I don't see this as a warrant article, just to give you my heads up. Because, um, this comes down to, if we're doing this project, it's, it comes down to student safety. And to, to me, that's not something that the voters are responsible for, that's something that we're responsible for. So I really don't see a warrant article as being the right place to vet this. Because it is, it's, it comes down to, why are we here and talking about this right now? It comes down to safety. If we feel we can do it for $10,000 for a year, I, you know, with the wear and tear, I wonder. I hate to put bad money after good, or bad money before good, um, that kind of thing. But, you know, I, I do think we need to vet this. But I look at it as an operating expense first and foremost. And if we're going to do it, I say do it right the first time. Don't, you know, put a Band-Aid on, on a bigger issue.
Okay. Mr. Schneider, do you have a question about the tracks?
Yeah, well, it's related. The superintendent asked if there's more data that we would want before deliberating next. So, we've all walked the track, we all know that there are spots that are more susceptible than others. And I agree with, with, uh, um, with Shannon that the, the safety is the utmost thing. I asked about the blending of the colors mostly because if we did patching, it will allow us to, to at least have something cosmetically that would be appropriate if, if an interim. But I think, we're not track experts. I think, at least, I'll speak for myself, I won't speak for the whole board. I'm not a track expert. I want to make sure that the track is safe and I believe it needs to be replaced. And I'm in support of the eight-lane, if you're going to do it, do it right kind of scenario. That's what I said before. But frankly, it's, it's a concern to me is to whether we budget 10,000 or 15,000, whether that would be enough to cover to make sure the track is safe for this remaining year, even in a worst-case scenario. Before we hit the CIP year where, where we've got it more in plan, you know, the, the next budget year. Because obviously, this is a fairly large budget item. We know we've got a fairly, uh, we've got a, a lot of stressors on the budget this year. So I want to make sure I have as much data as possible when we have to deliberate this. And understanding realistically whether $10,000 is adequate to handle even a worst-case sort of scenario. Or whether, you know, whether maybe we should budget more or whether, you just don't know. I mean, it's an educated guess at best, but I think as much data as we could get along those lines to look at the two options of either repair to look at the two options of either repair or replace is important to have. It's data-driven, there's got to be a data-driven decision. So as much data as we can get to help us in that decision, I think, is what we need to have.
Good point. Any other questions related to the track? Okay, seeing none. Did you, did we cover everything in your budget we intended to? And I said it would be tomorrow, we're an hour shy.
What else can we ask him?
I, so I want to thank you again for the presentation and the late hour and hopefully some of the comments and follow-ups like Mr. Schneider's question related to repair and, and how much that might be in the worst case, I think would be helpful for follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Tuso. So that now takes us to item number eight on the agenda, dissemination of proposed New Hampshire School Board Association resolutions. You will notice in your packets, you had a copy of the New Hampshire School Board Association resolutions for 2015. The 2015 School Boards Association Delegate Assembly is taking place on Saturday, January 10th, 2015. Our liaison and executive member of the New Hampshire School Boards Association is Vice Chair Barnes. And what we need to do is provide direction to her in terms of the Merrimack School Board's votes as it relates to the various resolutions. So in terms of process, what I would ask is that the board review the proposed resolutions and rather than walk the list, what I will do at the next meeting on January 5th is request any board members' exception to the way that the New Hampshire School Board Association is recommending. If you have an exception to that, you'll make a motion. We'll take a second, we'll have discussion and the board will render a position on that resolution and then our vice chair and liaison will vote at the assembly as such. Are there any comments or questions about that? No? Wonderful. Seeing none, we will now move to other correspondence. In terms of correspondence, there was a letter from the president of the Booster Club who was disappointed that the track was not included in the operating budget this year and also requested information regarding the advise and confer agreement. Is there any other correspondence that's come before the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to comments. After our last meeting and the delivery of the budget, I polled individual board members to get their opinions over the past couple of weeks on that budget and I think that there is a consensus in terms of direction, although perhaps difference in terms of amount. But I think to a person, the board would like to see the proposed budget presented by administration reduced. So what I would ask is, since administration is closest to the budget, understands the implications associated with various cuts, that administration come back with some proposed cuts from the amounts of $750,000 to $1.5 million. And as has been done in years past, if it's workable for you, Marge, to come back with perhaps level tiers of cuts within those ranges. I think the board would be most appreciative. And as always, with any of those reductions, the board is extremely interested in any adverse implications of making those cuts. What are we giving up by removing that money? Did I accurately sum up the board's position? Okay, good. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to new business. Is there any new business to come before the board? Seeing none, we'll move to item 11, committee reports. Ms. Crowley, is it not past your bedtime?
It's super past my bedtime, I'm very tired right now. Okay, that sounds amazing, please do. So, sad, Students Against Destructive Disguises who visited last meeting. They have been selling MHS-themed sunglasses and colored headbands for students and faculty to fund their annual Mr. MHS competition, which prospective participants can sign up for during lunches. Winter sports have begun and the first games and meets are, are this week, except for wrestling and bowling, which began last weekend. Silence Olympiad returned home from their first large competition over the weekend with many high-ranking prizes. And exciting news on the volleyball front. Jen Coffey, who visited us in a previous meeting, won the 2014 Gatorade Player of the Year.
Great report. Any other committee reports? Ms. Gualyumi?
Just a couple. The Budget Committee had a training last week, although not an official Budget Committee meeting, but there was a training that was done by Matt Chauvin. Maybe he can tell us a little more about it, as well as Stan and Pat Heinrich both had roles in that.
Yeah, at first, Stan, the chairman, invited me to go before the Budget Committee to just kind of give them an overview of the process. Basically, it was the newer members that were there. One of the, not newer members, but new to probably a lot of the new vice principals that we have, Chuck Mower, was there, who's always good to see, I always enjoy his company. And Pat went through the RSAs, what a role the Budget Committee is, their, their duties and whatnot. And then I just went through kind of a sheet that I created about different scenarios and walked them through the, the general process from start to finish and then ended with a sheet that gives them all the dates they have to follow. When do you have to hold your public hearing? When's the last date for petition warrant articles? When's the last date for collective bargaining? So we went all the way through that and it was a two-hour meeting, sitting there and a lot of good discussion and a lot of good questions asked, so, good meeting.
Great.
And there was also a professional development committee meeting on December 11th.
Great. Mr. Schneider?
Two really quick. On the eighth, there was the Planning and Building Committee meeting where they discussed, they focused in that meeting on the JMU, the JMU's, the central office in the JMU is looking at numbers there. They're going to look at the, there's a meeting on the 22nd where they're going to focus on the spend at middle school and then talk about website and stuff. So they're working through sort of the calendar that they gave you, working towards items to prepare to present to us in December, or January, excuse me. And then also on the fourth, the fourth of December, there was a Merrimack Safeguard meeting. A couple of things to point out is, they had election of new officers and the chair of the committee is Kay Murphy, who's the retired guidance counselor that many of us know from the high school. And also there was a, the, the members of Merrimack Safeguard went to the Chamber of Commerce, their morning meeting that was on Friday, the fifth, at the Hawthorne Suites where we introduced what safeguard was. It also sort of kicked off a Facebook page. There's now a Facebook page for Merrimack Safeguard and it's owned and moderated by Mac the Moose. You can find Mac the Moose or Merrimack Safeguard on Facebook now, so there's a presence there, so.
You're not giggling, are you? Any other committee reports? Okay. Seeing none, I will move to public comments on agenda items. Are there any public comments? None. I will close that, we'll take a moment to sign the manifest and I will entertain a motion to enter non-public session per RSA 91 hyphen A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, sections A, B, and C. Motion made by Ms. Gualyumi. Is there a second made by Vice Chair Barnes? Ms. Gualyumi, how do you vote? Mr. Schneider, how do you vote?
In favor.
Mr. Powell? Vice Chair Barnes?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor, so the motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you, everyone. Good night.